Good morning, welcome all to our informal session. Vice Mayor Wilson's running a little behind, but at this point, I guess we can go ahead with council briefings. And the first one is going to be the Doritz Hospice House of Hampton Roads update. Okay, and Mr. Belucci is also running a tad behind, but we'll go ahead and get going.
Well, thank you for having us here today. It's the DeZortz Hospice House of Hampton Roads. My name is Lynn Clements. Some of you may recognize me as a former city employee. I worked for the City of Virginia Beach for 32 years and happy to be back here. And I have some other folks with me that I'll introduce in a bit. But I did want to say thank you for the mayor and for Dr. Ross Hammond for sponsoring us at the meeting today. Thank you very much. And Mr. Belucci's not here, but he's also been very supportive, so it's exciting to have news to update you about. We want to also thank each of you for sponsoring, giving us the property donation for the Hospice House of Hampton Roads. It's called the DeZortz Hospice House of Hampton Roads. You transferred 2.5 acres to us. It's on Upton Drive in the Red Mill area, and it's a perfect location. It's a 12-bed, 16,000-square-foot facility, and I'm excited to report to you that it's under construction for sure. It's already under construction. In fact, we already had an event there last week. We had Centerra give us one-half million dollars towards our fundraising, and we had a check presentation onsite. So that was very exciting last week. So the bulldozers are there, and it's really happening. We've also been in touch with the neighbors, as you can imagine, and the neighborhood next door, and we've been answering questions and keeping them apprised of the status, just like we're doing with you today. Our contractor is Whiting Turner, and our architect is Virginia Beach-based Cox Cleaver. And we open at the end of the year, and when we do, our operating partners will be Westminster Canterbury on Chesapeake Bay and Beth Shalom Village. Other partners that we will have will be the local universities, because they're going to be able to have their students do internships and clinical rotations at the hospice house that we're building. And volunteers will be critical, as you can imagine. They'll be really important. We even have volunteers working now, even though the house won't be open until the end of the year. For example, Virginia Beach residents are on a team to plan a pickleball tournament, if you will, in June, and that's going to be in June 17th. And we're also doing a regatta. We're having our second annual regatta in Hampton by the Hampton Yacht Club. So the whole community has pitched in to help us raise some funds, and it's been really wonderful working with the volunteers. We also hope to have trained volunteers to help the patients and their loved ones during their end-of-life journey, including family bereavement support. So I mentioned Westminster Canterbury, and so what I'm going to do is ask the CEO and President Ben Uncle to speak to you, because Ben was involved in the creation of this project. He's been a force behind it. And so after he speaks, I'm going to give you a brief update on the Capitol Campaign and how we're doing. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Appreciate being invited to give you an update. So in 2009, when I was considering career options and landed at Westminster Canterbury and had the good fortune to land in Virginia Beach, one of the things that impressed me about this area is that when there was a hole in the safety net or a hole in the services, the leading citizens of Hampton Roads made it happen. I heard about the medical school, and when the legislature wouldn't appropriate enough money for a school to produce enough doctors for our area, the leading citizens of Hampton Roads, in partnership with the local governments, I'm sure, came together and made it happen. Lynn Haven River is dirty. Leading citizens stood up and made it happen. I remember being a boy in the mid-'70s, nerdy kid in a doctor's office, reading about this hospice movement and the fact that my little rural county in Maryland of only 90,000 people, and that's only because a naval base came in World War II, my little rural county of Maryland, St. Mary's County, Maryland, had its own hospice house started by local doctors in the mid-'70s. And one of the things I was surprised by when we landed in Hampton Roads was that there was no purpose-built hospice house. It was such a gaping hole. I mean, I remember fundraisers for the ones in my little rural county. People would just throw money at it and say, "Don't even give me the chance. You took such good care of my mother, and it's a very needed service." When you look around the country, it's astounding that it's taken so long to fill this gap in Hampton Roads. If you look at West Virginia, Hampton Roads has roughly the same population, 1.7, 1.8 million, you know, 1.72, I think, in West Virginia, and they have five hospice houses. The nearest one in Hampton Roads is in Williamsburg. It's four beds in a house at a pipe stem lock in a housing development. It's a gaping hole in our safety net. And so thank you for giving us the land that made this possible. When we started, we thought we needed to raise about $6 million to make it happen. Interest rate changes, construction cost changes, all the rest. We're up to $10 million, but we have raised this original six, and we're on our way with the Curtis Fundraising Group to close that gap, but we have solid financing. Southern Bank stood up and took faith that we'd be able to raise the rest of the money and has given us the loan that it takes to complete the project and fund the first year and a half of operating fund losses as you get started up. Westminster happens to run the second-largest "in-your-private-home" hospice agency, and we see the gaps firsthand. There are the people who don't have any family. The way this got started was Terry Jenkins, who you all know very, very well, went to take care of somebody in North Carolina who had no children, and she saw the hospice house work for that person, and she came back and said, "Where do I volunteer?" And there was none, and she got energized about it. I was involved in Civic with Kathy Lewis, and we got a group together who saw the hole. We knew Jim Spoor, for a long time, had seen this hole missing, and he was interested in helping out. A parishioner at Galilee Church went to take care of someone who had no children in Kansas City and came back and said, "Where's our hospice house? I want to volunteer." None. It's a gaping hole. Thank you for your help in getting us to the place where we can finish and fill it. There are three groups of people that need it. The people whose symptoms are changing too quickly, and the "in-your-private-house" government benefit will not pay for round-the-clock care. That's one group. There's a group with other people in the house who emotionally can't handle the death occurring in the house. Shirley Wharton's given me permission to tell this story, the chief nursing officer of Centerra for many years. She had to pull strings to get her husband back in the hospital, because they didn't want the death occurring from cancer around her children in the house. You get a tremendous opportunity for the family to be the family. Who wants their oldest daughter taking care of their bodily needs and functions at the end? That time should be spent with the family. And then there's the last group I mentioned that Terry and Lynn Chafin came in contact with, and that's the people who have gone through life and outlived the rest of their family, don't have children nearby, who can't take care of them. And this house will meet a very important need for all of those groups of people. So thank you for your help in getting us launched with such a great piece of land.
I do want to mention the DeZortz family. They were very generous in donating a generous contribution, and we're proud to call the house "The DeZortz Hospice House of Hampton Roads" for Dr. Ronald DeZortz. And Sheri DeZortz-Friedman is on our board, and she's the chair of the Capitol Campaign. I'd like to show you at this time two brief things. One, you'll be able to see, and one, you'll hear. The first one is going to be a fly-through, and the house has changed a little bit since this, but it'll give you a sense of what it looks like. It's very brief. Here we go. And the next thing you're going to hear is a clip from WHRO's News Division featuring Hospice House Board Member Dr. Terry Jenkins, who was Virginia Beach's Director of Human Services, as Ben said, for many years. And so this is going to be Michelle talking to Dr. Jenkins.
I'm Michelle Hankerson. This is WHRO News. A local nonprofit is close to breaking ground on an independent 12-bed hospice facility in Virginia Beach. WHRO reports on its progress. Terry Jenkins has seen people spend the last bit of their lives in hospice. Now she's learning what it's like from a different side. She was diagnosed with clear cell ovarian cancer about 18 months ago. She was in remission, but recent scans showed the cancer returned.
When I talked to the oncologist, he said, "Terry, we're out of treatment options." I said, "So what are we talking about?" And he said, "We're talking about hospice."
Jenkins is a member of the board raising money and planning the new Hospice House of Hampton Roads. From her bed, she spends her last days preparing for the launch and getting her personal affairs in order. She doesn't think she'll be here much past the start of spring. That means she may miss the groundbreaking for the hospice facility she's spent years organizing.
The board will have to continue to raise money to support it. We want to be able to take them, whether they have insurance or not, particularly people who may live alone and are out in the community somewhere and really don't have any support.
Jenkins and the rest of the Hospice House of Hampton Roads board estimate they need about $5 million more to fully build and open the facility. They hope to do that by early next year. Michelle Hankerson, WHRO News.
So isn't that amazing, that from her hospice bed, she's speaking to us? She's remained steadfast in her support of the house, and as a patient now, she's a compelling spokesperson. And as she mentions, we need the community's support. So as the fundraiser, I can't pass up this opportunity to say that we ask the audience here and anyone viewing this at home to please contact us to help and donate to our cause. Our website is hospicehousehr.org, and you can make a donation, but we also invite you to volunteer, and you can sign up at that website as well. So thank you for letting us update you through the year. We'll keep you updated, and I'm sure that you'll all want to come to our ribbon-cutting. It will be by the end of the year. So thank you for letting us speak. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any questions at this point? Barbara?
Everybody out there that I used to be here all the time with, and Terry Jenkins was certainly one of those people. And when she started talking about this, it was just one more thing, because the long, long list of things that Terry has done for all of us is just practically endless. I was, of course, the district representative for that area at that time. I think now it's slipped over to Rosemary. But when Terry approached, asking about that particular property, I was very pleased that we were able to make that happen, but, you know, there's always a little glitch, and the neighbors were concerned. And I'm sure you all remember the conversations, because the neighborhood had always envisioned that as being their open space park, because of, of course, the bar pit for that development there. And so, and one of the adjoining property owners particularly had a problem with a child who had had a bad experience, and so they were concerned. And we came up with planting a row of very fast-growing bushes and making a buffer and so forth, and watching that grow. But the morning that the chainsaws went out there, I had emails lit up. So can you all tell me what the plan is to make sure there's going to be that buffer in place? Are you all going to replant something? And I will just say to the council that, of course, the neighborhood is still looking at that little piece between this property and the, what is it, there? They say, "Well, can we have that for open space?" And so I think they've already submitted that as a possible open space property, but they probably deserve it. But anyway, are you all going to put that buffer back?
Yes, ma'am. The scrub along the water, I think, is, they came over and chatted with us, and we were explaining to them that we didn't intend to cut down everything. It was just the scrub area. So we've been talking with them quite a lot, and we do want to have the barrier, so.
What about the buffer that was at the end, next to the house that actually is?
So Ben will tell you.
Because we planted those to be fast-growing, and they were.
Yeah, I've talked to Mark Borse about, that's the house that's immediately to the left side, if you're looking at the water. And I wasn't aware that we cut down things that were already growing along there, but we do have a landscaping plan to provide buffer. It's a tall white fence, and we want things that will grow up even higher than that tall white fence to be planted there. That's our intention.
Our city manager was very specific about what we should plant there, that it would grow, so the city had planted those things there as the buffer and provided.
And then we took them down?
Down very quickly.
Okay, well, we got to find out what those are. We'll find out what those are, and we'll get the same plants back at least the same size.
And goes back, because that was a promise that we made to the neighbors.
Okay.
And we've got to make certain that we keep our promise. And then the property owners across the water, of course, they were looking at the other vegetation and so forth. So we have some.
We'll definitely work on the one to the side. The one facing the water, there have been promises that have expanded among those neighbors of we would never move, we would keep a buffer so you couldn't see the house from the water. Well, the whole point of having a house on the water was, of course, that you get to see the water. So there's an in-between. Somebody got a miscommunication about the fact we'd never remove any vegetation that blocks the water. Well, of course, you know, the point of being on the water is for the patients to see it. It's so far away, looking across that water into the house. But on the buffer, we'll certainly put back whatever was planted there to provide a buffer.
We can talk about that.
All right, great.
And we'll talk to the rest of the council about that other property in between, because I do think it might be better as an open space park area for everybody, rather than to think that it might be another office or something there.
Okay, Amelia?
Yes. It is so good to see you all here today. I remember when Paul called me up and we had lunch over at Westminster, which I'm familiar with, because I'm a member of Bay Lake United Methodist Church. And he said Jim Spoor and Cindy had recommended me being on this board. And it was dear to my heart, and I've gotten to know quite a few there, because I had the situation where I lost my mother in 2019, and there was no dedicated hospice house here. But luckily, Centerra opened up a big room in there for her last three days, where we were able to bring my family in from DC and, you know, stay with her until the last beat. So this is important. I'm dedicated to helping see this happen, and you all can relate to this with your different families in the area, because you never know when that time comes up to have some caring people around you. And this is what the Hospice House will do. Thank you for your presentation.
May I ask that our board members stand to be recognized during the line? Could our board members stand at this time?
Please stand up.
Come over here and stand.
Yeah, because Amelia's on our board, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Amelia, you can get a little photo of it. So thank you for having us today.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a question or? Okay, you know, if I could just say this. I think this was an important demonstration to the council and to the public that why we are considered a caring city. And then once again, Ben mentioned, you know, the holes in the net and the necessity. And, you know, let me put it this way, as a healthcare professional, you know, we have to have a seamless continuum of care, so we don't have those holes in the net. And especially as us baby boomers of the '50s, and there's quite a few of us, who are going to start hitting their '80s and '90s, you know, once again, we got to think about a continuum of care that is cradle to end-of-life. Once again, the challenges of end-of-life, you know, which helps us define ourselves as a community. The fact that we were able to jumpstart this entire progress by donating the land, and now they have a successful campaign going. You know, this is the type of collaborations that I think are useful to us, not only as a city, but as a community. So for that, I thank you all very, very much. As you can see, there were a lot of familiar faces from the City of Virginia Beach in the audience. Okay, at this point, let's go forward with the Flood Protection Program Capital Improvement Update.
Well, good afternoon. I'm happy to be here with you guys again and give you a quarterly update. We last talked last December about the flood protection program. So today I have an update for you. I'm happy to let you know what's going on. And I also wanted to point out that every month right now, we are publishing a report, a status report. It is available through the Ripple Effect website from the Citizens Oversight Board link. So this is just to show you what the report looks like and what's in it. So the contents are briefly just showing you at a program level how we're doing, how we're progressing with the projects as well as spending. So we have in there a table every month on how the seven master schedule projects are doing with relation to spending on their budgets compared to their capital CIP budget. We also have a high-level schedule where you could, and this wasn't meant for you to kind of dissect today, but so you can see where each of those projects fall into the 10-year window. But drilling down, for each of the projects, we provide you a very detailed listing and accounting of what are the sub-projects that are under that master project. This is half of the projects that are in the Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, the Lakes' master schedule project, master project. And you can see the ones in orange were specifically referenced in the bond referendum. The updates to schedule and the changes since the previous report last month are shown in red. So you can see here that the Old Forge Road has advertised and has been, is advertised for construction. We went those bids out. So we have all of that information available. If you want to see it, you can go to that link, and we'll be happy to get it to you. You can get a paper copy also, if you prefer, so, okay. So I want to tell you what's changed since December on these specific projects. You may recall this kind of matrix that we're showing you. So the first column lists the projects that are currently in a procurement phase for professional services. And you can see the West Neck Bridge up there, we are procuring an engineer, and that's going to be noticed to proceed in a few months here. Similarly, for the Eastern Shore Drive, roadway drainage improvements that phases 1F and 1G, that's progressing, as well as Point Cheadah Pump Station, that's in the Eastern Shore. And then for Critical Resort District, we're getting ready to start the preliminary engineering report. So that'll be one of the later projects, but we're getting ready to do that planning work. And then in the Windsor Woods, the big master project, the design-build project we've talked about before, that we are currently soliciting firms for design-build contractor. So a lot of the projects that we're in planning, when we last talked in December, are still in planning, the Lake Bradford in Charge Point. And the other changes that have happened is we've had some progress made on the construction in that fourth column. You can see South Plaza Trail is going to construction this month. Old Forge Road and Bow Creek Section 1 have all advertised, so it's exciting. We're getting more and more projects out the door. So we're going to continue to update this, but I did want to note that there's not like a whole bunch of red across, this is from a quarter, but these projects are so large that you don't necessarily get the next design milestone in a month. They take, you know, years. Most of these projects take three to five years to complete. So, but we're still going to provide you the monthly snapshots in the Citizens Oversight Board for that. So I wanted to transition just a little bit and not just, and to remind you a little bit that it's a program, and it's just not building new assets. It's about protecting the community, and operations is a big part of that. So we have been working with operations to help them report on the work that they're doing to provide improved flood protection. And it goes into these three categories. We have some projects that they're building, both from the operating and capital budgets, that are maximizing the storage available in the system, so that when it rains, there's a place for that water to go without flooding the roadways and structures. We're also doing a lot of work with improving the reliability of our assets. You already have 17 stormwater pump stations, miles of pipes. You want them to work when you need them. That takes a lot of attention and investment to keep them up. And then the third category is operational readiness. You're spending a lot of money on these new projects, and we need to be ready for those assets and be ready to engage them when they're ready. So I'm going to briefly talk about each of these three categories. So, sorry, that did not look that bright on my screen, but it's going to wake you up from your lunch today. But from the system's storage capacity perspective, the types of work that is ongoing are lake dredging. We have 27 lake projects in progress. Now, 20 million of that is from the American Rescue Plan funding, the grant that you received, and then another 10 million is from the CIP projects. But I wanted to make a note that that sounds like, oh, that's a lot. You know, there are different phases. You can see in that middle, upper box graph there, some of them are designed, some are in permitting, some are getting ready to bid, fewer in construction, a couple have been completed this year already. So we're, each of those are a separate project, but by the time we finish them all, we will have dredged 245,200 cubic yards of material from the lakes. Now, I'm an engineer, so I did the math, and I was trying to think of something local. So I took the boardwalk. The boardwalk is three miles long, 28 feet wide. You could build a wall 15 feet tall with the dredge material from these 27 projects. So if you think of all that material out of those lakes, we now have volume to store water that when it does rain in those localized areas, will have improved storage volumes. That's why we do the lake dredging. We're also cleaning canals and ditches. You can see on this left, the right, these are the active canal and ditch projects that we have going on right now. It's about $3.3 million. And this is just going on right now, just a snapshot in time, but I did want to point out that we maintained about 22 miles of ditches last year. So this is an important program that we're continuing to do. And then finally, in the capacity area, is neighborhood drainage projects. We go in and assess the current drainage system and make repairs as needed, so that there is storage capacity in those storm pipes and that the water flows as intended and designed. So we have a lot of neighborhoods underway right now. We have 27 neighborhoods, which represents 40 miles of pipelines that we're televising and inspecting, and those are being funded from the capital program. And then we have another 16 neighborhoods that represents almost 60 miles of pipes that we're televising, inspecting, and repairing, and that's being funded through the American Rescue Plan grant. So we're maximizing use of those grant funds, and they're really being put to use very well. All of these projects are advancing individually, so I just wanted you to get a snapshot in time of the types of work that the operations group is doing as part of the flood protection program to make sure your system has available capacity when it rains. Now, briefly about the asset reliability, I tried to match the colors with that original three chart, so that's why they're all a little wonky here. But that's about improving what you have. So we're really doing a lot. This is, just gives you a sample, in February, our operations teams were really busy. They had to respond to 77 cave-ins. They had to respond to 77 cave-ins. They had to respond to a lot more, but that's how many they had to fix. So they had to, they spent $53,000 just cleaning basins. They've inspected 60 stormwater best management practices, BNP's. And they cleaned almost three miles of ditches just from the inspection work that they've done. And you can see that there are a few projects that are going on right now at the 17 pump stations. And I get to say 17 because you just put a new one on. At the Asheville Pump Station just started, so now you have 17 stormwater pump stations. And every year, we do work at those stations. You can see last year, at the bottom here in 22, we replaced 51 pumps. So, I mean, that's very important, the mechanical equipment, the instrumentation, all those things need to get updated. So the operations staff is on top of it, what each of these stations need, and we have a systematic approach for improving them and maintaining them throughout the year. I did also want to show you that there were, last year, 503 cave-ins had to be fixed by the operations team. So while we're preparing and making sure that your system still works, it still tends to fall apart with age and different things. So the more we televise and the more we get done, the more improved reliability that these assets are going to perform when it rains. Now, the last category I wanted to present to you today is the operational readiness projects. And one of the reasons we need to do that, there are two main reasons. One is to meet the level of service targets. And that means the frequency we clean lakes, the frequency ditches are dredged and cleaned, how often we're televising pipelines. We want to meet those goals so that they're, we're ready for that and we're prepared for the investment requests we need to make of you. But if you look on this right side, the bond referendum projects are going to construct 10 new pump stations. You're going to double your stormwater pump station inventory. So we have to make sure that your team is ready. And some of those are going to be significantly larger. They're going to be tidal-based stations, tidal floodgate control. So we're not trying to control the tide in many places right now, but we're going to be working on that in a couple places. So we're bringing in, and a specialized Jacobs is bringing in an operational assessment team, and we just got the notice to proceed for that. And so I'm bringing in people who just do operations. They operate systems every day. They're experts in this field. So they're going to come in and they're going to perform these five tasks. They're going to visit with the field operations team and the managers and talk about how are things going, what keeps you up at night, what's working well, what's not working so well. Then we're going to take a look at the standard operating procedures. Do they need to be updated? Are they being followed? Those kind of things. Does anybody know what they are? Sometimes you get all across the board because you have people coming in and out who have different levels of experience. We want to make sure everybody has the latest and greatest operating procedure. And then we're going to look at the tools that you have. You're using a Cartograph in the GIS system. We're going to see, are you using that to the best functionality, or is there some more training that we could offer that, or maybe some more modules? And then finally, we're going to assess the staffing. Do you have the right staff set? Do you have the right, do they have the right skill sets? If you're building these very large pump stations in the future, you're going to need some mechanics and electricians that you don't have now. Do you contract that out? Do you work with public utilities? Do you hire? So those are going to be the kind of questions that this assessment's going to answer, as well as the operating budget. As we bring these new facilities on, we're going to have to have more operating funds to run them, more manpower, more power, electricity. So those are the kind of things we want to have known in advance so that we're ready. So when we say operational readiness, we want to be ready for those projects to be effective as soon as they're turned on. So that's, in a nutshell, what we're doing on this operations side of the flood protection program. I didn't want to keep, take a lot of your time today because I know you have a long day, but I'd be happy to answer any questions either on the projects or on the operations report.
Any questions at all? I think we're, Barbara?
My question, but a comment of going back to the promise that we made to the public in the resolution. Briefings are supposed to be bimonthly, and I heard quarterly. So are we changing what we had planned to do?
I think last council meeting, we spoke about, and I think we agreed to maybe go quarterly, especially in view of the long process here and the slowness between monthly updates. But I defer to council if you all would go.
But I don't know. I still go back to a promise is a promise, and we don't keep our promises, it comes back to haunt us at some point. The only thing, I mean, it's a very nice update, and I think we've got a great story to tell that maybe we are not telling enough as far as what is being done. I know in my part of town, I'm looking at Phil Cutter, we know the ditches, don't we? And just saying we're doing this many miles of ditches, my folks want to know which ditches and which canals and so forth. And I know I'm getting a bit of an update, but I would really like to know more of the specifics. Of course, my part of the county is, city, is half of the city, so it's pretty big and whatnot. So I may have different situations than some of the rest of you have as far as everybody knowing their area. But also, keeping us up, because, you know, I started hearing, I'm seeing surveyors on Punga Ferry Road, are they surveying for this project? Yes, I'm sure they are, but I think if we could actually occasionally meet with the people and tell them what we're doing and share with them, it will be good. I know with my four projects, it certainly would, because people are going to have to adapt along the way. And if they know what's coming, I think it will be better. Because Punga Ferry Road's not going to be an easy thing to do, and I bet there's going to be a closure somewhere in the future. People know that ahead of time. But we ran into something just this last week with the soil stockpiling, where we had not told the people what we were going to do. So now we've got to go back and start over. I love the fact that we're ready to do the Marsh Project. I mean, having that ready to go after this year, when we finally get the agent area done, is amazing, and that's great. But we have to, and I think people will appreciate the good news if we tell it to them, especially along the way. I think we've just got good news that we're not telling enough. And I think if we're doing that, we're going to be behind and tell people, well, yes, this is what we have to do because of this project. We build that support as we go along, and that's important.
Hey, anyone else? Amelia?
As you mentioned, the 17 pumps that the people in Burton Station, when they have their foot in, has made a big difference for families who come back and visit the area. But one person asked, what do they do with all that dredging materials? Where does it go? So I thought to bring that to you.
I'm going to ask Mr. Cutter to come up here and talk about that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Yes, right now, all of the dredge spoils that we have from the stormwater BMPs and also the navigational channels all go to an old burrow pit that is located off Oceana Boulevard. Right now, it's called Whitehurst Pit. So we're managing that facility, and we're putting all of our spoils in that location at this particular time.
Thank you. At least I can address that because people ask, and thank you for all you're doing.
Anybody else?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Perhaps I would suggest that not to give too much more work or pressure on staff, but staff maybe communicate with us in our various districts because this is such a large project that we could, all of us can get lost around the city. But as it pertains to our own particular districts, maybe we could get updates individually on that.
We could provide that in the monthly report, a district-by-district report.
That would be helpful to everybody. Rocky?
Let this go by. Ms. Henley said that District 2 makes up half of the city, but let me say that District 1 is not large, but we make up for it in character over in District 1. So we're certainly represented.
Oh, the gauntlet is thrown here. My goodness. Whatever happened to congeniality? Oh, Lord. And we were doing so well. That's right, we all are equal in population. Good point, Michael. Okay, thank you very much. But I'll tell you what, we are making progress. You know, we've got a lot to be proud of. Mr. Duhany, it's that time.
Oversight Committee, Mr. Waller wants to say a few words to the council.
That wouldn't be a problem at all. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Jeff Waller. I was here in December. I'm the chairman of the Flood Prevention Bond Referendum Oversight Board. It includes the oversight of the seven major project areas in the city, the 21 projects identified in the bond referendum. There's 10 support projects and 10 other active projects, so 41 projects. The resolution, and there's just a little discussion on this, the resolution creating the board calls for a report from the board to City Council every two months. The board requests change in this to every third month, and I think Public Works is drafting a resolution to come forward, changing it from every second month, every third month, which will coincide with the briefings by Jacobs Engineering. Public Works Jacobs has detailed a monthly, a detailed monthly report that I think was in a recent council package, the February report. The plan is moving forward to include the monthly report in City Council package to Friday, do it quarterly basis to Friday before they report and I report back here. As Laisha said, the changes every month are kind of minor. They're not minor. The changes, there's not a lot of changes. So if we have a report every third month, there's not significant changes that are happening since the last report. Since our last report in December, the board's received staff readings on, staff briefings on two of the master projects, Eastern Shore Drive and Lake Bradford, Lake Chub. An objective of the board is to listen to the public. I live near Lake Bradford. I have some contacts with residents who are interested in our project. So before our February meeting of the board, I called some. Three of them showed up, and they seemed interested in coming. So in a further effort, we want to contact, oh, and in a further effort to contact the public, this Thursday, Mr. Remick's having a District 9 Town Hall meeting and, right? This...
I canceled it.
Oh, you canceled it? Okay. Then I won't be attending.
But I would like to say, just a point of information. Mr. Mayor, District 1 is having a Town Hall meeting on March 30th, from 6 to 8, if you'd like to attend that one. We'll be having ours at the Kempfville High School Auditorium.
If you want me there, I'll be glad to, and I would ask, if I show up, you point at me and say, he's on the oversight.
Absolutely.
So the public can come and...
Absolute.
Barbara, I think, I think we've got a little thing going on here.
Just letting Mr. Holcomb know that District 2 meets just Thursday, the 23rd.
Any other meetings that we have scheduled? Chris?
If I can have that information to give to people, that's what they're looking for. And I have it every month, and they look for something every month. So anything you've got district-wise, I need.
Okay. We'll see if we can pull together between now and Thursday. Do you want me to attend? 23rd, right?
Well, I believe that Phil's going to be there anyway, talking about the road.
Yes, ma'am. My team will be there.
Okay, so he will be there, and we can get it together.
Okay.
Chris? Okay. Hey, anybody else? Okay.
Josh? I just want to say thank you to Mr. Waller and a shout out to him for being a District 9 resident. And thank you for your work sharing the committee. I appreciate it.
We knew this was going to happen.
Yes.
And we talked about it at our last board meeting, that if we're going to talk about something specifically within somebody's district, we'll make sure that the council person knows so they can attend the board meeting if they would like to.
Amelia?
I was just saying, he's my church member.
District 4, inside trash.
One of my church members.
Well, it's nice to know the city is very well represented by their district representatives, isn't it? Good stuff. Good stuff. Hey, thank you very much.
Most of the other comments I had were all really touched on by Laisha. And I have a request, and I said this last time, if any council people specifically want the board to look at something, if you'll funnel it through Mr. Remick, and he'll get it to me, and then we can try to address what you want.
Hey, Barbara?
Well, I was going to talk about this later, but since we're talking about flooding and so forth, March 31st, we're having the update that I asked permission from you all for in December on the update of the Albemarle watershed. And the Albemarle watershed drains 67% of the city. And I think all of you, if you look at your districts, a lot of them are going to have at least a little sliver that comes to the Albemarle. So it's not just District 2 that drains to the Albemarle. But this is a follow-up to the first symposium we had five years ago in 2018. And I think it's amazing to look at where we've come in that length of time. And the speakers are going to be from Dr. Batten to Dr. McLaughlin, who's the person from Virginia Tech who's doing the flooding, trees flooding. You'll see the listing on the back, and it's a fantastic opportunity to see everything in one sense instead of getting a piece-meal here and a piece-meal there. So I really hope that you can come for all or part of the day. Of course, our own people are going to be making some presentations. And I think it's just amazing to think within the five years since we had the first one, we have developed so much data and so much science, and we're really pretty far ahead of anything I think we could have thought, even with the pandemic. So I'm going to pass these around. It's just at the convention center, right here in town. Costs you $30, and that includes your lunch. It's a good deal, the best deal you get. So yeah, I hope that you can come for at least part of the day.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, thank you. Mr. Duhany, it's that time.
Mr. Mayor, you're correct. It is that time. It's the, it's the start of the presentation where the city's staff, the budget director will provide council update on the city manager's proposed budget. And basically, after this, it becomes, it becomes up to council to take the proposed budget and reconcile it to council's adopted budget. So the next 45 to 60 days will typically be, your briefings and your workshops will more likely be council getting up to date with the budget and getting more familiar with it so you can make your policy decisions. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the budget staff, in particular, our director and our deputy director and their amazing team. It's a small department, but for the past five to six months, they've been working with all the city departments, all of our constitutional offices, and all the others entities that receive funding from the city to figure out the best way to bring together this budget. And council, as you'll see, and as we briefly discussed in a couple one-on-ones last week, is that this has been a difficult budget for us. It's not like how the previous two budgets have been. Our revenues are flatlining, and the cost of inflation and cost for services are increasing dramatically. And as you'll see, it was very difficult to come to a sense of how best the balances and some tough choices were had to made. In particular, nine projects were unprogrammed in your CIP. But we look forward to working with you all and taking your discussion and guidance in mind as we move forward to reconciling the budget for your adoption in May.
Hey, welcome, Kevin.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for the introduction. As the city manager said, we've been working diligently for several months now to develop the FY '24 proposed budget. So it's with pleasure that I'm here to present this today in front of City Council are the printed documents, the operating budget, the capital improvement program, as well as the executive summary, which is a document that includes a lot of information, more specific, more in a narrative format for council and the public to be able to digest. At the conclusion of the presentation, those documents will be posted on the internet for the viewing public to be able to go review and look at on the city's website. So in jumping to the operating budget presentation, so quick high-level overview here in this first slide. When looking at the operating budget, some highlights is that one might see that the proposed operating budget in FY '24 is growing at about 3.4% compared to the amended FY ' '23 operating budget that we're currently in. Total FTE increases are proposed for a net increase of 130.4. You can see there in that table, that's split between city and school, with cities being 110.6 and schools being 19.8. I'll get into it in more details in future slides, but about 81 of those proposed city FTEs are related to public safety and public safety initiatives. Looking at high-level expenditures, the proposed budget is positioned to maintain all baseline services currently being provided by the city. Some enhancements in areas identified by City Council and residents as being priority areas. areas, allocation of resources are being provided for those. And looking at revenues, as the city manager just said, we're seeing a return to the normal growth in our overall revenues for the city. Real estate's growing 7% budget to budget. However, all the other revenues on average are growing about 3%. And I'll get into more revenue discussion a little later in the presentation. Also included in the proposed budget are a few fee adjustments and fee increases to continue to maintain services. And again, I'll get into more detail of those later in the presentation. So a quick recap over the last three years, as the city manager was saying, it's, Virginia Beach has certainly been COVID-19 pandemic winters. The city took a lot of measures early during the pandemic to position itself to be able to weather the storm. And we were able to do that in a way through guidance and leadership from council. So over the last three years, there's been several fiscal relief initiatives approved by city council and implemented at the direction of city council. So the next several slides are going to give a high-level overview of those, and so city council and the public can be reminded of what those were. Looking at real estate taxes, so in FY22, the city council reduced the real estate tax rate by 2.75 cents. That generated roughly about $20 million in real estate tax relief across all residences and businesses. Coming into the current operating budget, FY23 operating budget, city council made a decision to absorb the bond referendum, the $567 million bond referendum that was approved by residents. And to put a sustainable bill player and bill payer in place for that, they dedicated 4.1 cents of the real estate tax rate. And they did that not by increasing the tax rate, but instead by redirecting it and dedicating it through the growth that occurred. So in total, $52 million is being provided in terms of fiscal relief and tax forgiveness. Looking at personal property tax relief, several initiatives also took place over the last several years with the carve-out of EMS volunteer personal property tax rate. City council implemented personal property tax rate for new businesses that qualify for the BEPole tax exemption program as well, and for individuals over the age of 65 or who are disabled with a reduced personal property tax rate. Also coming into the current fiscal year, city council was presented with information that vehicle assessments were growing at a faster-than-normal rate, primarily related to used vehicle values actually appreciating as opposed to depreciating. City council implemented the fair market value approach to bringing those down, resulting in the avoidance of $38 million in personal property tax revenue to residents. So in total, it's about $38.4 million. Other local business tax relief initiatives, suspending the ABC license during the pandemic to help businesses, as well as reducing the BEPole or Business Professional Occupational License Tax as approved by council this last December. Estimated impact of those resulted in about $1.4 million of relief. And then there's other various initiatives that were approved by city council and given a direction of city council, including a meals tax holiday, estimated impact $12 million. Local and federal fiscal relief initiatives through the availability of federal dollars as well as a redirection of local dollars. And the deferment of penalties and interests and waste management, water and sewer fees, and they froze the ERU rate over the last, they froze the ERU rate until FY29, and they've waived and decided, opted against increasing waste management and utility fees as they didn't feel residents is fair to burden them in a time of such uncertainty. As you can see, the bottom total, the total fiscal relief initiative totaled about $182 million over the last several years. So as the city manager provided the introduction, last fall, city staff and city manager were certainly aware of the fact that this budget process was not going to be like previous budget processes. We knew there was no more stimulus funding coming down the pipeline as a direct aid to localities. We were seeing revenues begin to slow their growth as opposed to the double-digit growth some of them were experiencing coming out of the pandemic. We knew that inflation was going up in the operating budget, and operating, operational inflation impact about 6% is what CPI is. And when looking at CIP, the need for projects exceeded original budget estimates by as much as 48% for some projects. And city council certainly aware of this. The city's still trying to address maintaining services in light of the great resignation, which is impacting the city's ability to deliver some of the services. City council is aware of this, allocating resources to invest in the city workforce. You received a presentation several weeks, or a couple of weeks ago, that we are making progress in this area, but additional efforts are needed to continue making that progress. So as we were working through the budget development and developing the operating budget, we were focusing on a few guidelines, first being to maintain baseline services as best possible. Then we were looking to expand in priority areas where city council had communicated a need or residents had communicated a need in those. For example, communication efforts, recruitment, retention, homeless services, and grant opportunities. And then an additional resource that we utilized in the development of the operating budget was from the results of the resident satisfaction survey. So a high-level overview of the proposed operating budget, about $2.5 billion. You can see here from the pie chart that the largest portion of the operating budget is allocated to schools with 46.1%. The next largest portion are the infrastructure-related departments, about 13.5% for public works, planning, public utilities, and then public safety, they're also at 12.4%. Little deeper dive into public safety. So as I'm working through the operating budget and talking about some of the proposed initiatives, up at the top, you'll see a table that gives the results of the resident satisfaction survey and some of the areas to look at in terms of measuring of how the city's doing in response to the residents' needs. So as I'm working through these, you'll see the ones that are compared against Virginia Beach with Atlantic and national averages. And for those that are just specific to Virginia Beach, you'll see an NA for some of the Atlantic and national averages, as there wasn't a benchmark to compare it against. Starting with public safety, there was a need to make a few baseline adjustments to the operational budgets of the police department and the sheriff's office. So for example, bringing on the Axon body worn camera contract, there was a need to plus up the police department by about $2 million. In addition to that, the e-ticketing software came online with an ongoing cost of $600,000 to ensure that these didn't squeeze out other police department services. We provided those additional resources to them and not asking them to try to absorb those. Another notable increase for baseline services related to the sheriff's office, year over year, the increase, the transfer from the general fund increased by $6 million. This is related to compensation adjustments needing to be annualized and keeping the sheriff on pay period with the police department. In addition to that, there is inflationary impacts resulting in contract increases in the sheriff's office requiring additional general fund support. And they're also experiencing a level of revenue loss in per diem reimbursement for inmates as inmate population's down, currently down. So looking at other initiatives, some noteworthy adds to the operating budget is 11 additional police officer positions. The police department's making progress in filling their long-term vacancies. And over the last couple of years, to address other initiatives that didn't necessarily require sworn personnel to be able to do that, the police department recognized this, and they redirected some of those vacant FTEs and reclassified them to non-sworn positions. An example of these services are such like the Real-Time Crime Center. This is going to be going in the police headquarters. So the police department's making progress in filling these vacancies. And as a result, it's believed that to fill their recruitment classes and their academies and graduates, they'll need an additional 11 FTEs added to their FY24 operating budget to get them back to pre-pandemic level authorized strength. Additional add to the police department or proposed increase of the police department are two positions related to mobile device technicians. So the police department's seeing an increased need in this in terms of the time that's taking and the certain level of expertise and specialization to look at mobile devices and properly decrypt them to get all the information needed for their investigation. The addition of these positions will allow the current officers doing that duty to be redirected to other things and back to police being police, if you will. And these positions will be able to specialize in that field. Regarding the fire department, three additional FTEs are proposed to be added related to firefighter safety positions. So these positions are to aid battalion chiefs when in route to a call, ensuring that they are able to get there safely and assist them on scene and back at the station whenever not in the field. Related to EMS, the proposed budget makes a significant investment in the Department of EMS of 40.6 FTEs. So city council certainly aware of the impact that the pandemic has had on the volunteer rescue squads. Not only negatively has it impacted their ability to generate revenue and fundraise, but it's also impacted their ability to attract and retain and keep volunteers to properly staff the needs of all EMS services across the whole city. The proposed budget's requesting an additional 38 FTEs to be added to EMS to aid the volunteer squads in this service. This is a continuation of what was put forward in the current year's budget when city council approved the allocation of 20 FTEs within Department of EMS to provide these services. We certainly believe that EMS believes that with these additional resources, they'll be able to ensure that two ambulances and one zone car remains in rotation on a daily basis and be able to work to help augment and fill that gap that the service that the volunteer squads are currently experiencing. In addition to that, the proposed budget has a recommendation to provide a $700,000 volunteer rescue squad grant to the volunteer rescue squad council. As I previously said, they're experiencing cost increases and reduction of volunteers, and it's believed that these additional resources will help them in meeting their ongoing obligations and needs. They actually requested $2.5 million from the city for this specific purpose. However, we weren't able to fund all of that need, so being put forward for council's consideration, public's consideration is $700,000. The last bullet point there are 12 additional Commonwealth attorney positions. This is related to the implementation of the body worn camera program. Per state code, each locality is required to provide a certain number of positions to Commonwealth attorneys on a per body worn camera ratio. The Commonwealth attorneys always worked with us to allow us to phase this in over time with the recent rollout of full body worn camera for all police officers. They've seen a significant increase in FOIA requests, review of that footage. And with these additional 12 FTEs, it'll get us in line with what they believe are their need to maintain those services. Something worth pointing and highlighting out about this slide is that additional investment of EMS staff as well as Commonwealth attorney, those are phased in and funded for a partial year. The FTEs are authorized coming out of the gate. However, funding will be put in place for those beginning July 1 on a staggered basis. Another area, the market, or excuse me, the resident satisfaction survey is in Parks, Recs, Library, and Human Services. Some notable additions to the proposed operating budget in these areas includes four library positions to restore central library hours. These were reductions that occurred during the pandemic. And with these four additional FTEs, library will be able to restore Sunday hours at the central library. Another recommendation that's included in the proposed budget is the elimination of library fines and fees. This is a trend that's going on across the country in which literature is indicating that individuals who are most in need of library services aren't able to obtain those services due to the barriers put in place by late fines and fees prohibiting them from gaining access to the needed materials. The operational budget impact of that is revenue loss of about $100,000. Also being considered or for city council's consideration are five FTEs within the Department of Human Services with the goal of restoring pathway services. So these are mental health services, and this facility was one of two crisis intervention clinics within the, within the region. Human Services certainly has been having difficulty filling these type positions. However, it's a critical need, and by providing these five positions, it'll provide Human Services the most amount of flexibility to ensure these services are being met over the next year. Other notable adjustments are related within the Department of Parks and Rec. An annualized cost related to the Parks After Dark Program was provided to Parks and Rec operating budget at a little over $444,000. And the last bullet point is related to city council's discussion related to the Parks and Rec modernization plan. Michael Kirschman and I presented city council previously that there's some questions about the long-term sustainability of the Parks and Rec enter, excuse me, Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund. Notably, over time, general fund programs and initiatives have been being covered through the Parks and Rec dedication and Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund fees. So with the FY24 proposed budget, it's recommended that those costs and services be removed from the Special Revenue Fund, brought back to the general fund, which has a net impact on the general fund of about $3.8 million. But it does put the Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund in a position currently not relying on fund balance to maintain their operations, and opens the conversation up for city council to discuss future project, future renovations, modernization efforts.
Kevin, so the $3.8 million is not for modernization, it's?
It, no, sir. It is just to, if you will, level set the operating budget to get them not to be using fund balance to maintain their current operations and kind of wipe the slate to allow for a clean picture and visualization going forward of what are the operational needs of the Special Revenue Fund should, excuse me, should city council decide to invest in rec centers and modernize at this cost with this impact of the debt service, what's the gap needed to maintain those operations sustainably?
And if I could ask council if you have a question come through.
Kevin, I'll probably exactly talk to you about that now or probably how it's projected with the use that we're seeing as fund balance would probably now or get it closer away. If there's going to be federal fund support, that would need to go over to the Parks and Rec fund to support the Parks and Rec operation.
It would have certainly been within the next couple of years. Yes.
Yeah, Josh.
And just, sorry, to be 100% clear, does this restore that revenue stream to 100% go toward the Special Revenue Fund?
Yes. So if you look in the proposed operating budget, you will see things such as park operations and park maintenance removed from the Special Revenue Fund. Those have always been general fund initiatives. Other programs moved back where out of school time, and these other programs that weren't the original intent of the Parks and Rec dedication whenever it was put into place through the bond referendums and the tax increases years ago. Yes, sir.
Anyone else at this point?
Included within the resident satisfaction survey was a grouping development services. So this is really related to economic development, code enforcement, some housing initiatives. Some notable additions or requests included in the FY24 proposed budget includes an additional FTE in the Department of Economic Development to act as a hive presence in the front office of the hive facility, as well as to some operational costs to expand the workforce development and training initiatives occurring, occurring within that initiative. Included within Parks and Rec's operation, operating budget is a plus-up of $250,000 related to the need to contract out for homeless encampment cleanup efforts. So this is related to the resident satisfaction survey up there of trying to ensure that enforcement and junk of debris and cleanup on private properties done in an efficient and timely manner. The last bullet point is related to the Housing Department, where six additional FTEs are being proposed to be included to their department's operations in FY24. Housing's looking to make an investment and plus up the homeless prevention program, which they have. Five of these positions would be specialist positions related with that, with one being administrative support-type position to assist the housing staff. Something important to note about these positions is that housing's looking to utilize grant funding, and there's very little, if impacted at all, to the operating budget of the general fund related with providing these positions in the FY24 operating budget as they're being covered by HUD dollars. In the area of customer service and community engagement, this is certainly something the resident satisfaction survey had indicated Virginia Beach could make some improvements in. City councils also echoed this as a need in light of the district system and engagement with the public to be sure that we're communicating all citywide initiatives and needs and programs to those residents. So the proposed budget recommends an additional two FTEs within the communications office, as well as an investment in some software tools and packages. as well as an investment in some software tools and packages. The FTE specifically will be for a professional to be out and doing community engagement and activities with the civic leagues, and another position will provide additional staff support to the director and the coordination of these efforts, as well as maintaining the overall citywide calendar and calendar of events for these initiatives. Included within the city manager's proposed FY twenty-four operating budget are two FTEs for the city manager's office to assist in the community affairs or the constituent affairs division of the city manager's office. One of these to take on the role of a special projects coordinator, and another position to be a primary point of contact, whereas individuals call in, they're able to speak to somebody or they'll email them, and they'll be directed to the most appropriate path to get a response to their inquiry. Also, within looking to make improvements in the realm of customer service and community engagements, Public Works with a proposed stormwater community engagement FTE. So, what Public Works is finding is that as they're meeting with the public, engage in the public, they're really good at being able to articulate the technical needs of the projects coming to the residents, but what they're finding is some citizens whose project might be years away or phase two or further down the road, they're looking for some help in the meantime to mitigate their flood mitigation needs. So, the idea behind this position will be that'll be a person who can help assist them with that, point them in the direction of existing grants, programs, and other initiatives underway to help them with their more short-term needs. An additional position is being proposed for the general registrar's operating budget. This position will allow them to stay in line and keep up with demand for services related to recent changes impacting their operations, such as same-day registration, absentee voting. Those are having a negative impact on the general registrar's operations. With the addition of this position, they'll be, it'll bring them in line with other workload metrics for other regional comparison general registrar offices. Looking at infrastructure and transportation, so this is an area again where the residence is, citizen satisfaction survey indicated we can make some areas of improvement, specifically in the area of lighting on city streets. Public Works Department had even prior to receiving the results of this, had made a request for two electricians and their department to make enhancements in the LED streetlight repair and enhancement program. Public Works had also requested a planner estimator to make improvements in street and sidewalk maintenance program, and they plus up their operating budget by about one point three million dollars for the paving maintenance program when compared to the current year's operating budget. It's important to note that these plus-ups from Public Works came as a result of additional VDOT revenue that they're receiving, and so that estimated revenue allowed offsets to these expenditure needs, resulting in no impact, or it did not have to compete for other general fund resources during the budget process for consideration. Also notable is a city manager, one of the two city manager positions I previously referenced, they are going to be working on the citywide ADA compliance and assisting in coordinating these efforts with Public Works as they receive that input and come, in those comments from the public. Looking at utilities, more specifically stormwater. So, city council's obviously aware that, and not surprised by the results of the resident satisfaction survey in these particular fields. Some notable adjustments or a request for funding in the FY twenty-four operating budget are related to the masterwork project management system, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, as well as additional authorization for five FTEs within Public Works Stormwater Maintenance to address stormwater maintenance initiatives and capital construction needs. So, these are, for example, construction inspector positions. So, that resources have been allocated and put in the CIP to fund the projects. Public Works now getting to a point where they need the bodies and the manpower to ensure that the projects stay moving on a timely manner. Also, something important to note about these, similar to the previous slide, these positions are being added to Public Works operating budget, and the revenue supporting these exists within the existing real estate tax dedication for stormwater of two point five cents that's in Public Works operating budget. So, it's through that growth and that revenue that Public Works is able to put forth these recommenda, recommendations and no impact the city. Looking at waste management operations, so I previously talked about how city council had made decisions over the last several years to not increase fees and impact, negatively impact citizens or residents during a time of such uncertainty. One of those fees that was deferred was consideration of a waste management fee and an adjustment to the baseline services within the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. So, city council might recall over the last couple of years, a need to allocate general fund resources over there to provide capital maintenance needs or capital replacement needs. They've also been in a situation where they've been utilizing one-time fund balance to maintain their operations, which is going to have them on an unsustainable path without additional revenue streams. So, Public Works reached out, worked with a consultant to do a rate study. The consultant came back with a recommendation of a three dollar per month increase within the Waste Management Enterprise Fund with future increases to occur on an annual basis. The proposed budget is putting forth a recommendation or a request for a two point five cent increase, or excuse me, a two dollar and fifty cent increase in the monthly waste collection fee to maintain the baseline services. The reason for the difference from what the consultant put forward is city staff and looking at it, there's still a lot of unknowns related to future policy decisions, such as recycling services and what that contract is actually going to do in a couple of years whenever it's up, as well as future SIPs, tipping fees, are they going to go up or down? There's possibility, some fluctuation in those. So, as opposed to requesting the three dollars, it's requested that the fee go up two dollars and fifty cents for a total monthly fee of twenty-seven fifty to be considered by city council to maintain those operations. Something worth noting, and it's difficult to do, it's difficult to benchmark the fee with other localities for this reason. So, you'll see that of these areas of the mark, or the resident satisfaction survey where waste management was scored by the residents, you can see that we score higher than the Atlantic and National Average in majority of these categories. Those with the red box around it are what the twenty-seven dollars and fifty cent fee covers for the city residents of Virginia Beach on an annual or on a monthly basis. So, the reason that's difficult to do when benchmarking with other localities is localities might have a fee for that service, but they'll charge for these other services, or they'll limit the number of occurrences that these can take place, as opposed to Virginia Beach, which doesn't charge additionally, nor does it limit the utilization of these resources to the residents or services to the residents. The Public Utilities Fund or the Water and Sewer Fund was also a fee that would, or adjustments were deferred over the last several years. Public Utilities worked with a consultant to do, on a rate study, and the recommendations from the consultant was that Public Utilities needed several adjustments to stay in line and meet their bond covenant, to remain in compliance with their bond covenant, as well as meet mandated services from the mandated requirements from the state and federal government on water services. So, the proposed adjustment being put forward for consideration is a increase of thirty cents per thousand gallons in the water utility fee, as well as a seventy-seven cent per month service charge increase. There's some other connection fees that are being put forward for consideration that the consultant was looking at, some of which have not been adjusted since two thousand and ten. City council's certainly aware that it takes staff and, and individuals to be able to deliver the services, as they made well very clear in the adoption of the current year's operating budget with the migration and the implementation of the market salary survey and the compensation package approved in the current year's operating budget, in which they implemented a step initiative for eighty percent of the workforce, as well as gave range adjustments and adjustments to individuals who were in need of it and out of line with the market. So, the FY twenty-four proposed budget recommends continuation of that initiative with a five percent proposed compensation increase for full-time and part-time staff. So, this is to come in a couple of different forms. So, for example, in bullet points there, individuals who are on the step plan, this would translate to a three percent step increase or move, allow them to move up one step. And then in addition to that, it would be the equivalent of a two percent general increase or COLA, cost of living adjustment. Those that are not on a step plan, they would receive it in the format of a three percent merit increase and then a two percent general increase for cost of living adjustment. The last bullet point there related to compensation is for the fourth year in a row, the proposed budget does not include a recommended increase in employees' health insurance premiums. Instead, those are to remain flat, or those proposed to remain flat. However, the city's contribution to the health insurance fund is programmed or budgeted to increase by three percent. Quick high level of schools. So, included within the proposed operating budget is the superintendent's estimate of needs, excuse me. This is reflected in the proposed operating budget in front of you and was the information that was best available prior to the school adopting the proposed budget in the first week of March. So, there was a little change in it, and what we'll be doing is looking to bring that to city council as part of the reconciliation process, so we can ensure we've captured the school's actual proposed operating budget, but also cities, the schools will be able to better answer and clarify any questions you might have whenever they present to city council in the month of April. So, some, some numbers from the school's operating budget, so growth in a couple of revenue streams, that's worth noting, is the revenue sharing formula provided to schools grew twenty-eight point five million dollars between the current year and the proposed budget. State revenue increased by twenty-seven million dollars. So, the schools initiative, and they're very clear about that in their proposed budget, is to make an investment and a compensation plan for their workforce. They just underwent a market salary survey similar to what the city did a year ago, so the potential impacts of that is ranging between forty-four and fifty-five million dollars. And even though it's difficult to pin down exactly what that translates to, to every individual employee, it roughly averages out to about eight percent per employee is what the school's looking to accomplish.
Any questions at this point?
The last slide, please. So, the last bullet point about the teachers. So, I was talking with a principal today at Salem Middle School, and she's telling me about the need to make sure they have quality teachers, and Chesapeake is, it is my understanding that they're actually compensating their teachers more. And so, I proceeded to tell her about the eight percent. Her question and concern was, it may not impact everyone the same due to the step program. Is that correct?
I believe, yes, sir.
Council member, you're correct. It may not impact everybody the same. This is similar to what happened last year when the city council adopted our market salary survey, where we were able to come up to say at least everybody was going to get at least five percent. Some employees at the schools may see eight, some may see a lot more than eight. For example, like in our market salary survey, some employees saw five percent, but some employees saw ten, fifteen, twenty percent. That's what, when Kevin was talking about in the beginning, why it's difficult to pin down what it actually means for every individual employee. The market salary survey is looking at each individual classification, and it may impact the employees differently, but you're correct, you know, is that it's, it's around eight, it may impact employees differently, but it's difficult to pin down until it's actually adopted and they're able to go through that exercise.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else at this point? Okay, great, you know, okay to move on.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, shifting topics a little bit, and looking at the CIP or the Capital Improvement Program. So, in developing the CIP, the proposed CIP, put forth for city council and public's consideration, the guiding principles that we were using was guidance provided by city council at the retreat. So, we were certainly, we presented city council of information related to the impacts of inflation and the costs that we were seeing with construction contract increases. So, city council gave the guidance of the goal should be to maintain existing infrastructure and assets, then look to modernize those existing facilities and infrastructure, then if the demands for services are there from the public, look to expand the existing infrastructure with a focus on new facilities and infrastructure, then coming in line. So, as I previously mentioned, inflation within the CIP was at a level that I haven't seen in my years here. Some project cost estimates now exceeding the original forty percent or the original budgeted amount by as much as forty-eight percent. And is, as is the case every year, there's never enough resources to meet all of the needs, but it was particularly the instance in this year. So, in looking at the program CIP, you can see from the pie chart, total CIP across all appropriations to date and six-year funding is about five point one billion dollars, with the largest portion of that being allocated to stormwater and flood protection program at twenty-five percent. So, some CIP highlights related to public safety. So, several projects within the CIP are to maintain current services within Public Works operations. So, for example, the fire apparatus project in the buildings, the buildings and assets section of the CIP, it's a previously approved project, it exists. However, there was a need to plus up that project by about eight hundred thousand dollars per year due to inflation cost increases of the fire apparatus, pumps, squirt trucks, ladder trucks, et cetera. In addition to that, due to chip shortage, there's a now eight hundred day estimated lag time between the point in time of ordering prior to it being delivered. So, with that being in mind, we're certainly mindful of that, and we feel that this plus-up and additional resources over the next six years should allow the fire apparatus to, the fleet to be maintained at a satisfactory level to meet this demands of the public and safety demands. Another needed investment was related to the fire facilities rehab renewal project. This is an existing project that's been in the CIP for many years, receives a level amount of funding. There was a proposal to increase that funding by five hundred thousand dollars a year to allow Public Works to get in there and maintain the facilities and address some maintenance backlog needs that have arisen. So, the total program amount for that project over the six years is about six million dollars. A new project that's being put forth for consideration in the proposed FY twenty-four CIP is a project for mounted police maintenance and repair. The police department's been at the current mounted patrol facility for about thirty years now, and there's some needed investments and maintenance needs of that facility, such as roof, HVAC units, some electrical work. That's been included for consideration in the proposed CIP totaling two point two million dollars by year four. Another project that's new and receiving some funding within the CIP is the Law Enforcement Training Academy. This is a project that was considered and had a good deal of discussion by city council at the retreat. However, there wasn't quite clear guidance or enough information available for council to make a decision to move forward or a commitment to move forward. So, included within the proposed budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that allow Public Works to go out, do an additional study, and gather that information to allow city council to have that information to make the most informed decision that they Another area within the CIP worth noting and highlighting is that within the Department of Parks or the CIP section, Parks and Rec, the city has an existing bikeways and trail implementation project that's received steady funding for several years of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Parks and Rec has communicated that this is not allowing them to get a trail done in any given year, let alone they have to wait and to accumulate funds over a couple of years before they can even begin the work on a trail. So, in light of that, in addition to the inflationary cost increases, additional resources have been put towards that, bringing that total to six million dollars being programmed over the six-year CIP period. Another notable project worth highlighting is a new project added by city council last year for the parks, infrastructure, replacement, and underdevelopment parks project. So, this, previously, this work was accomplished through the open space dedication and the open space project. City council last year made the decision to split that repurpose open space for its original intent and purpose for site acquisition and open space initiatives, and then establish this project, which is to be supported with a four million dollar annual contribution from the general fund. So, that project is remaining on track to receive twenty-four million dollars over the program's six-year CIP period. Ultimately, the plan with this project is to work down the existing backlog maintenance of infrastructure, and then in the out years, probably even beyond the six-year CIP with continued funding in this project, get to the development of some of the existing underdeveloped parks. A new project within the proposed CIP is for the Little Island Fishing Pier. So, in two thousand and twenty-two, an assessment study was done, giving this pier a rating of poor and indicating a need for some pretty critical emergency maintenance needs to take place at the pier, so it remains safe for the public. Included- Included in year one of the CIP, CIP is $1.2 million for that purpose. And then also new to the CIP is a project for the rec center's modernization totaling $10 million in year six of the CIP. So this is again, a project or discussion that had a good amount of conversation from city council at the retreat with some uncertainties in terms of what's the priority, what's the order, what's the plan, do we have a sustainable bill payer? So by programming this project as a project related to just rec center modernization and not establishing that priority of any of the existing facilities and putting it in year six of the CIP, that'll allow city council to have time to have those policy discussions and make an informed decision prior to making additional commitments in this project over time. Some CIP highlights related to the economic and tourism development services. I apologize for all the information on the screen, but there's lots worth highlighting in this area. So a couple of notable projects that were existing projects that needed additional funding to get to construction in order to complete include the Lynn Heaven Parkway Corridor Project, $1.15 million in year one, and the Winston-Salem Avenue Project needing an additional $5 million. So worth noting on these two projects is there's an existing appropriation to date balance. So for example, on the Winston-Salem Project of $8.9 million, this additional $5 million is what's needed to get this project to construction, which is, has long been a conversation point, and I discussed with that local community as getting this work done. The next two bullet points are just highlighting existing projects and just noting that the funding has remained on those projects over the six-year period, one being the EDIP or the Economic Development Investment Program, which receives a dedication of the cigarette tax. It totals $8.6 million over the six-year period. Another notable project was a new project in last year's CIP, and this is for the sports tourism infrastructure project. Total programmed amount in the CIP is $17.5 million. It's a tip fund funded project, and this remained in the CIP to be appropriated in that amount, 17.51 towards the project come July 1. The next bullet point down is an additional investment in an existing project. So that's for the Virginia Beach Innovation Park Infrastructure. A total additional need of $12.6 million was identified to build out the infrastructure within the park to meet the, meet the needs of the development. So majority of this cost increase or this $12.6 million is related to meeting stormwater regulations. Some of it's also related to a pump station that's needing to be updated and replaced to adequately hold the development as being proposed within that area. And then another portion of it is just related to overall inflation and cost increases within the project. So two new highlight, new projects to highlight are at the bottom of the slide, first being new project for the Housing Resource Center to build out 30, 30 additional shelter beds. This has certainly been a growing need within the community as to those in emergency situations need shelter. And so through this $3.3 million being added to this project, they will be able to modify and adjust or make modifications to the existing facility to accommodate 30 shelter beds.
So on the Housing Resource Center, will we get any federal or funds to help with that?
We typically do not get federal funds for build out of, of CIP projects. We typically get federal funds for providing the grants and maybe even some operational and administrative needs. But it's rare to find federal funds specifically earmarked for the build out of facilities. But it's something that we can look into.
So that's a pretty compact building space, you know, with the parking lot.
So.
I forget where they're, where it's going to go.
Oh, so what we're, what we're thinking about doing is restructuring how it's currently set up. So right now, we have a lot of office space, and with what happened during the pandemic, we realized a lot of employees can go remote and, or tele, or telework or satellite work. So what we're looking to do is to move some of those spaces around to accommodate more bed space. Because I think as everybody knows, our homeless count in Virginia Beach is going up and likely is going to show a tremendous go up once we do our point in time assessment by HUD, and we typically need these bed space. For example, during the winter, there were situations where we did not have enough space to accommodate all the various needs throughout the city between ourselves and also through our nonprofit partners. But basically, we'd be looking to de, to deconsolidate or break down some of the offices and turn those into bed space to serve the, serve the citizens.
I know that there's a, there's a shortage that people have said they can't get in there, and it's already booked, so to speak. You don't have a place to go. Thank you.
Anyone else at this point?
Okay, I'll, I'll continue on then, Mayor. So the last bullet point here is a new project that's worth highlighting and being proposed in the CIP in year six of the CIP, and this is for the Oceanfront Aquarium Parking Phase One. So total request was for $3.7 million to begin the design of that. So typical what happens within the CIP, especially for new investments in infrastructure, typically year six of the CIP is when funds become available to allow for that programming and planning of those initiatives. So also, city council had discussed this pretty good depth and detail at the retreat with some level of uncertainty in terms of how to address the overall commitment. If this project is committed to and it's all done locally, so to do phase one, two, three, and four, the project could be close to $400 million. So city council had communicated the desire to reach out, get, see about finding some partners to call share in this project and see what the appetite for that is within the public. So with this project being in year six, it'll afford city council that opportunity to have those conversations and make planning purposes over the next several years prior to the appropriations actually being in place to actually begin the design work.
I mean, we would, we wouldn't see any kind of activity on this parking until 2029?
As proposed right now, the funding would not become realized until 2029. However, city council could choose to bring it forward if it so desired. What I got from council was, they understood the deal, they understood it's something that we, council may possibly want to consider, but there was a lot of things to clear up, such as the state participated in the beginning. Is the state willing to skip some funding? Is there possible likelihood maybe of possibly getting federal support? And also, we need to get a sense of what the philanthropic participation could be on this. And then once council had all that information, council could then decide if it's, if it was a picture wanted to hit, and then give us guidance on how to move forward. So this gives us additional time for council to have those policy discussions.
Anything else?
Sticking with the format of working through the resident satisfaction survey in some areas that relate to the CIP. So most of these projects represented on here are within the IT section of the CIP. So the first one, it's worth noting that the Enterprise Customer Relationship Management Project and the ongoing costs related with that system of $600,000 a year is, does continue to be programmed within the CIP. An additional project worth noting, it was previously programmed, and the program funding remained on that to be appropriated next year, and that's for the development of an ECCS or Emergency Citizen Services Call Backup Site for the call center. Programmed amount for that's $2.5 million. An existing project that received additional funding over the course of the six years is the Courts Technology Sustainability Project. Total program funding is $1.5 million for that. So in working with the courts over time, what's come to light is that they have some technology needs that are past their useful life and were the existing technology that was put in when the building was built over 30 years ago. So this project's looking to keep those courts up to speed in the technology needs of today. Two projects down towards the bottom are new projects worth highlighting, the first being treasurer e-billing. So with this investment of $414,000, the city treasurer will be able to allow residents the opportunity to sign up for e-billing as opposed to only relying on snail mail to receive their, their bills. An additional project also within the IT section is the migration of the My Revenue System to the cloud. So in doing so, will allow the utilization of other cloud services and other modules within the revenue system, the revenue management system to afford the commercial revenue and the city treasurer to expand and enhance these services over time. So speaking of roadways, so some CIP highlights and some things to talk about roadways. So just kind of outside of the bullet points on here, one of the things to talk about roadways is, it is by far the most complex CIP section that we have. Of the total $362 million that's programmed over the six-year period, 159 million of that is state and federal dollars, which is good, but it also creates some challenges when trying to redirect or reallocate some of those resources, especially in light of inflation impacts and trying to keep some construction projects going. So there's a commitment whenever you receive or receive program funding from state and federal government to maintain a certain amount of local dollars on particular projects. So that becomes all part of the balancing and the juggling act, which kind of makes it difficult to reach in and, and take from a particular project and shuffle those resources around. But that being said, happy to say that the program CIP was able to maintain $80.6 million over the six-year CIP, which is for ongoing maintenance-related initiatives. So it averages about $13.4 million per year, and this is related to sidewalks, traffic signal rehab, timing, and all those routine maintenance projects that get an annual contribution of funding. Some other notable projects that received increases in order to keep them on their construction timeline is Centerville Two, which was reallocated and redirected $29 million to keep that on track. Centerville Three, $11.4 million, and Rosemont Road Five received an increase of five, $15.2 million. Also notable is that through the allocation of additional $10 million in year five of the CIP, roadways was able to secure $29 million in additional state and federal dollars for, for particular projects. So I'll get back more to the roadway projects in just a little bit, but the reason I was caveat on that, talking about their complexity, is that we were not able to address all the needs of the CIP. And so in total, nine projects are being delayed and deferred that were previously reflected in the CIP, eight of which are within the roadway section and one of them was within the Parks and Rec section. And I'll get more into those in a second. Looking, continuing the conversation, the CIP related to stormwater and coastal. Something worth noting is an increased contribution of $2 million a year over the six-year CIP for the Stormwater Cost Participation Project. That totals $12 million over the program CIP. Something else that Public Works was able to do is through securing grants for other projects, they were able to free up local resources to redirect towards these maintenance initiatives listed here, including canal management, cave-in repair, and roadside ditch totaling 7.2 million. I previously mentioned the open space project, that's why it's on here, to just highlight that it's, remains funded at the previous level approved by city council and through that dedication. A note worth discussing on the beach replenishment project. So this is for Big Beach, this is the Oceanfront Beach Replenishment Project, which we partner with the Army Corps of Engineer to replenish that beach whenever the time comes. Total amount program over the six-year CIP is 17.8 million. However, the Army Corps contacted Public Works, and they notified them that they're mobilized and they'll be ready to begin a beach nourishment replenishment project sooner rather than, sooner than anticipated, resulting in the need to provide an additional $2.5 million in year one of the CIP for that purpose.
Vice Mayor.
So it's for the Big Beach replenishment project, it's not necessarily for the Croatan. The Croatan project does remain within the CIP, but it was not a significant plus-up for the Croatan project.
Reason I ask, I know that we were working with the Army Corps about the being drilled at Chesapeake Bay Bridge Shuttle to get their sand like Chesapeake Beach did.
So if I could, Vice Mayor, well, LJ is here. This is a perfect opportunity just to also talk. More detailed presentations, my lungs can't handle talking about everything that's in the proposed operating budget, and I don't think the public's brains can handle it. So more detailed presentations will be forthcoming, and so those type of questions that we get, we can certainly incorporate in the future presentations that section managers and directors are going to be providing.
You did a great job.
Quickly, Vice Mayor, this particular project is geared towards the large beach. That when we do the nourishment of the large beach, we'll also be doing the part for Croatan, but it's funded out of a different section of the CIP.
Thank you.
Thank you, LJ. So the last bullet point, and this is just worth noting, is that the coastal section of the CIP is programmed to be $76 million over the six-year CIP period. So in backtracking a little bit and talking about some of the things that the operating budget and CIP was not able to do. So I previously mentioned, we were not able to fund all additional CIP funding requests. 155 million of those are reflected as requests have been not funded within the operating budget document. So in addition to those new projects and additional needs, there was nine projects that we weren't able to fully fund due to a combination of inflation increases as well as construction timeline for other projects that had a more near-term priority to meet state and federal obligations. Funding was redirected from these projects to meet those needs. So additional information is about these nine projects is included on page 51 of the executive summary. However, like I was saying, additional conversation can certainly take place with these as the CIP sections or presentations are occurring before city council. Switching over to revenues. So I had previously highlighted and talked about some of these. Some others worth noting is that the proposed budget is balanced while maintaining the 99 cent approved tax rate in the current year, so there is not a proposed tax rate increase. The Parks and Rec Special Revenue Fund has some fee adjustments that they're proposing to increase to maintain service, services. This information's also available in line item detail within the executive summary. But most notable of this is an annual increase of $2 in the annual membership fee. I mentioned the library's fines and fees. The stormwater ERU, something worth noting, is that the rate does in fact remain at the existing 49.3 cents per day. However, something just worth conversation and talking about is that it was frozen until FY29. Now that we're seeing inflation increases and impact, that what was thought to perhaps be accomplished before, the dollar might not go as far. So it's not that there's a need to, the funds in a sustainable course, however, to get down the road to additional plus-up true enhancement on a program, sustainable year after year basis, conversations might need to take place about consideration with the stormwater ERU in the future. But as of now, the proposed budget does not make a recommendation towards any of that, and we are maintaining the rate as is. The other two I had previously went into more detail with, that's the waste management fee and the public utilities fee.
Amelia?
On the Parks and Rec increase?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it going to be based on certain areas, like we have Williams Farm, that some people may not, you know, be able to go up to that extra? Is there any consideration for some of those people long?
So I'm not familiar with a varying fee based on the rec center that is necessarily utilized in terms of the annual membership. There might be some user fee variances for room rental or things of that nature that might have some variance, but Michael Kirschman, the, the director who will be able to answer that is right here.
Good afternoon. So the recommended increase is at $2 for the adult membership fee to go from $110 a year to $112 a year, and no increase for youth, which is $40 per year. But that applies to all seven rec centers. We don't have different fees for different centers. We, we never have.
Do you have an idea of the, the impact aggregately that, that will, that will increase in terms of?
Should increase $40,000 our bottom-line revenue.
Thank you.
Basically, $20,000 for every dollar increase.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Like this. I like this budget presentation by committee. So this next slide, sticking on the topic of revenue, this is a more granular look at revenue that's included in the proposed FY '24 operating budget. Some that are notable on this are the top two, being the real estate and the personal property. So everybody's familiar who received the assessments and saw the presentation by the real estate assessor. Overall assessments are growing, on average, by about 9.5%. However, budget-to-budget growth in revenues only grown 7.9%. Part of the reason for that is because there's growth in mandated tax exemption programs, such as the disabled veterans and surviving spouse exemption. It's a state-mandated program, and the city doesn't have any control on that or ability to control the cost on that. So what's occurring is that program's growing by 24% a year, and FY '24 is projected to be $21 million. So right off the top of the revenue projections, that comes out as not being anything the city's going to receive. So that can have an impact and create that discrepancy. Of additional note is personal property. So the budget-to-budget growth is showing 8.1%. However, I'd like to caveat that. The assessment base is assumed to grow by the historical norm, about 5% across all the different categories. So the reason for that 8% growth is in part because we're anticipating a higher collection from the prior-year actuals. And I get that this is in the weeds, and I apologize. But so the city treasurer has reinstated the stops program, which is a collection enforcement tool. And in doing so, we believe that we're going to see some prior-year collections come in. The average annual collection of this revenue source is about 84% a year. So we think that this reinstating stops will help improve that. So that's the reason for the 8% increase above the 5% baseline projection. And we don't feel that that's going to be an ongoing 8% that we should be able to anticipate year-over-year in future years. And as I previously noted, up and down throughout those various categories, the overall operating budget's going 3.4%. And so outside of the real estate and personal property, those other revenue streams are growing on average by about 3%.
Worth?
Reduction in sales tax, Robyn.
So we were experiencing during the pandemic double-digit growth in general sales. So we weren't certain how much of that was being driven by inflation, how much of that was being driven by consumer spending due to stimulus funding floating around the economy. But then also, a third variable in there was a Supreme Court ruling that requires online sales to be remitted to localities. So we were seeing that year-over-year. So whenever we were developing the current-year operating budget, we had used that as a baseline to anticipate. We feel like there's been a little pullback from that, and we're back to the historic normal times. So even though budget-to-budget's going down 2%, actual-toactual, we still feel this is going to be in line with the 3% growth.
Anyone else with this one?
Something during the budget development process that we're always mindful of and transparent about is trying to communicate and look at the tax burden on residents. So as you can see at the top of this, residents within Virginia Beach feel, 52.8% of them feel that they get a good value for their tax dollars, which is certainly higher than the Atlantic and National Average by about 19%. So one of the things I wanted to do and include on this slide is a look at what that impact might be based on some of the revenues that we were previously talking about that we know are increasing. So the single-family median home value, when comparing the current year's value to the next year's estimated value per the real estate assessor, that annual impact of that is about $306. So since most individuals escrow, you can bring that down to a monthly estimated amount. And it's not everybody, this is estimates. So basically, that's going to translate to about $25.58 a month for a single-family median home. And then, if you follow that monthly charge column down, you can see that between the real estate, $25.58, the waste management fee increase of $2.50, the water utility and the sewer utility, the estimated impact is $30.35 per month. Something else we're mindful of and we like to do is benchmark or try to compare ourselves with other Hampton Roads localities in terms of what the overall tax rates are. So I know this is a really busy slide, but I'll take a minute to walk everybody through it. So the line graph represents the tax rate, the adopted tax rate by all the Hampton Roads localities. You can see that over time, Virginia Beaches has fluctuated up and then down. Majority of the localities have maintained the same tax rate consistently over the years. And then going into Virginia Beach being the bottom line there, that dark blue, this is where you can see the things I was talking about earlier, where between FY '21 and FY '22, city council reduced the tax rate by 2.75 cents. Going into '23, they kept the tax rate the same, but they lockboxed and they earmarked a percentage of that growth for the purposes of the Stormwater Bond Referendum. So up above, you can see that in FY '23, three of the localities reduced their tax rate, that being Hampton, Newport News, and Suffolk. And looking over at the far-right box, this is actually getting away from the tax rate and looking at the revenue growth-to-growth. So you can see that even though those three localities reduced their tax rate, overall budget-to-budget, their real estate tax growth was in the double digits, 11% for Newport News and Suffolk, and then Hampton, 10.3%. So in comparison, even though Virginia Beach didn't lower its tax rate, you can see down there what the controlling factor is for the bond referendum. So for example, Virginia Beach's assessments and revenue growth over year grew 9.4%. 4.4% of that was dedicated to support the bond referendum with Virginia Beach-based services and other dedications retaining the 5% growth. So another look, in doing a regional comparison, this one's a little bit more comprehensive in looking at multiple tax rates. You can see that Virginia Beach is the lowest, the majority of these, with real estate and personal property. Some of the other fees down below are tax rates. Virginia Beach is either tied in or lowest or near the lowest in the region. You might be asking about Chesapeake and looking at the solid waste fee. So something worth noting is the $27.50 monthly fee that Virginia Beach charges. Chesapeake does theirs through their real estate tax. So they do provide service, it's just done through their existing real estate tax. So the proposed budget continues. Annual tax relief programs previously approved by city council. I do want to highlight a couple as the proposed budget's positioned to provide city council some policy discussion, decision-making around two of those, or one existing one and possibly another one. You'll see underneath the real estate, the second bullet that's emboldened, the elderly and disabled tax relief. So this is the locally administered program, which city council has absolute control over in terms of how they administer and decide to allocate funds for this program. So the proposed budget has a recommended modification to the program. So what's been occurring over the years is partial exemptions aren't allowed to this program, prohibiting some households that would otherwise be eligible to partake in the program based on income and other eligibility. The disability just might so happen that one of them, one of the two owners is not of the eligible age. So what we're putting forward for consideration is to make a modification via ordinance to that program to allow for that partial exemption. Something else that the proposed budget's looking to do is incorporate a section of the budget ordinance, or excuse me, the real estate ordinance that allows a carve-out should city council decide to do so related to a tax rate for surviving spouses. This is something that the General Assembly approved last year, and localities can establish a tax rate that has to be above, that is to be more than one cent, one cent or above, excuse me, for this particular carve-out of individuals, of spouses, for individuals whose spouse might have died in the military or in the line of duty. So city council can certainly take that up during the budget reconciliation process should they like to establish or lower that tax rate. The proposed budget has maintained it what it would otherwise be billed at, unless otherwise directed by city council, and that's 99 cents. So last slide, some important dates in the overall budget adoption timeline. So the presentation I've given is, believe it or not, is high-level. And what departments are going to be able to provide is more specific information related to their day-to-day operations. And so they'll be providing those presentations to city council for their operating budgets and CIP sections throughout the month of April. You can see there through those workshops. Something important to note is April 19th and April 25th, there'll be two public hearings on the operating budget. And then city council's reconciliation workshop is scheduled for May 2nd with a adoption date scheduled for May 9th, which is ahead of the state-required budget adoption date. And so with that, I'll do my best to answer questions.
Rocky, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin, the manager, and everybody for their work on this. This is a good, high-level view. And one point of information, is there any way that we can make this available online? Have a link where it can be on the www?
Yes, sir.
I've seen people taking notes and taking pictures, but we certainly want to make sure you can get it.
We will have it posted to the city's website. It's something we do each year, and I failed to mention that the presentation would be there in addition to the documents.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So, Mr. Mayor, real quick, so here we are with the budget. And as always, the needs are many and the funds are few. And so it's time to make some tough decisions. And one of the needs that I think we need to address are the taxpayers and the citizens. And I hope that we can sharpen our pencils and find out where we can make some cuts and knock some holes in this budget without creating too much of a problem, but certainly giving our citizens a break somehow. So I'm hoping that that's the conversation that we're moving towards. And I've talked to several members here on council. And last week, I talked with the vice mayor. And I hope that we can look at some options, maybe to help out the citizens. And again, thank you very much for the presentation. And for those out there watching and listening, this will be online for you to review. Thank you.
And I think the vice mayor has some comments that will address what you just said.
It's a very, very great presentation. I've been on council for a long time, and I've never seen the budget presented with what the Citizens Satisfaction Survey has said, like you did this one, which I think was really, really excellent, which, you know, we've always had that Citizens Satisfaction Survey, try saying that three times. But to tie the two together, I think, was really a brilliant, wise move because that's who we're all accountable for, is to the citizens. And we have to create a balancing act. And I think when I sat down with you last week, I was really stunned at the needs that we have for public safety with our, especially of EMS. I mean, that's life and death situations. And I've always said, if you're not safe in a city, if your people are not safe, they're not going to want to be here. So that's a huge, huge chunk of where we have to go. And we're going to have to look at what's a want and what's a need, and make that distinction, because there are wants. But we've got to figure out what the needs are and prioritize that. And I talked to Patrick about this, and Bobby and I've talked about it, and several of you as well. To get through this, we've got to create a balance between the wants and needs and also the wants and needs of our citizens. And I know we've all been hearing, as Rocky alluded to, from our taxpayers, because they're feeling the crunch of this inflation as well. And, you know, a lot of them are on fixed incomes. They have no place else to go for their funding and their revenue streams. If we could create a sliding scale of one cent, if we cut out one cent, where we could, you know, what kind of cuts we can make to this budget? If we had a two-cent decrease, what those would be, three cents, four cents? And then we can look at those. And if we could do this, have it ready prior to the budget hearings. So when citizens come out to speak, we'll hear from them to find out, you know, what their appetite is for, I mean... Barbie, remember the year they tried to get the bookmobile out? They tried to cut out the... Yeah. There've been times when things were tried to cut out, and we heard loud and clear from the public, you did not want... It was the bookmobile and the cert person and all that sort of thing. So this will give us a chance, not only to be able to look at and see what we can, as Rocky said, live with, it's not going to be too painful, but also what our citizens feel like they really require. And we can create maybe that balancing act.
Okay, Barbara, then Michael.
Well, along that lines, in the past, we've had the ability for citizens to go online and balance the budget as they feel it. Is that available this year?
It is available this year. It's Taxpayer Balancing Act. Links to it are provided in the document, but they're also available on the city's website. So we have a couple of initiatives like that. We have the Balancing Act, and previously, we used to have a taxpayer receipt. And so that information will be available.
We've, in the past, had a small little handout that we could pass with information. Do we have anything this year?
So...
Go to this document or?
Well, Councilmember Enley, I can absolutely get you a one-page document that's as concise as possible and does this high-level overview and information, and get that to you. I'm familiar with the Budget Fact Card that we used to have, which was an accordion-like little card. I can get it quickly, though, I can get it consolidated on a one- to two-page summary and get that to you to be able to hand out.
That we're only having four budget workshops. And I know in the past, we've had more than that. So we've got a great challenge to get through all of this in four workshops.
We'll do it. Michael, and then Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things I'd like to offer. Just received a lot of information, and I appreciate all the work and consideration, everything that Mr. Duhaney and Mr. Chadelier and all the departments, all the work you did to formulate that budget. And I know it wasn't easy, and I appreciate it very much. I want to associate myself with the remarks shared by Councilmember Holcov and Vice Mayor Wilson. I know that I've heard from a lot of residents from across the city, and particularly in District 3, people who are feeling the effect of inflation and just the challenging economic times. So as part of this budget formulation, for me and from the feedback I've received from constituents, I think tax relief needs to be a part of that. And I just am sharing that, because we need to find a way to strike the balance between continuing to deliver services that residents and citizens rely upon, and also the infrastructure needs and all the capital needs that exist. But also, we need to ensure that we're responsive to the economic environment that we're living in and the assessments that have been levied on property owners across the city and a lot of homeowners in District 3, particularly, I think about my neighbors who have owned their home for a long time, and people even who don't own their home. And this is just, they're really feeling the effect of all this. So I want to acknowledge that, validate it, and really associate myself with those comments. And I know others at the table do as well. The other thing that I want to take note of is the Gold Star Families, surviving spouses. I just want to share with the council and with the community that I was approached by a representative from the Navy League, as well as a surviving spouse, about a more expansive conversation around this. I think there are some laws that have changed. I just want to inform you that I think that should be something that's on our radar. I think we're a military community. I think we, I'm sure that we all agree that the sacrifices made by service members, particularly those who gave everything, is something we should honor by supporting their families. And I think there is a way that we can move this forward and possibly with zero impact on our budget. So we're working on that. And if you'd like to be part of that conversation, I would welcome it. And so let's circle back on that. I did talk to the manager and Mr. Chadelier about that. And I'm excited to, I think it's a great opportunity to just, to honor those who serve our country and who gave everything by supporting their families. So there's more to come on that. Lots more discussion to have, but those are some of my initial thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin and Patrick, for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kevin and Patrick, for the presentation that I've spent with all of us to give us a little bit of the groundwork going into this discussion. I also, like all of us, have heard from constituents and likewise, like to associate myself with the desires expressed by the vice mayor and councilmembers, Brucchi and Holcomb. And I know, again, like you said, Michael, they're shared by, I think, all of us. We're all sensitive to the fact that, you know, things are more expensive for everybody now. And I think it'll be interesting to get through this as a first budget for us newbies, but it'll be, it'll be a real exercise, I think. And I do think that it does deserve to be mentioned that, particularly in light of some of the peer-city data that we've looked at, and in light of the fiscal, the various fiscal relief initiatives that we have been listed, that have been ongoing since March of 2020, we do, we do pretty good with what we've got. And I do want to acknowledge that. And I think it's important because there's a lot of people that do live in other parts of the country who are taxed quite more than we are here. But that's not to say that we shouldn't be looking for opportunities to make sure that folks are getting that needed relief. And in particular, I know there's, you know, we're talking around the real estate tax, but I'm also sensitive to the fact that a lot of the folks who maybe live closer to the margins might be renters and may not own property and therefore pay real estate tax. So, as we look ahead for opportunities to provide relief, I would like to just humbly suggest that we look for opportunities to make sure that we have impacts on people who need it the most. Whether that is through a combination of different initiatives, I don't know the answer to that question, but I just want to make sure that the people who need it the most are getting it.
Amelia?
I just wanted to mention, pretty well, I'm in line with all that you said. And I liked when I sat down with Kevin and Patrick, how they took time sharing what has happened. Because you may remember, I said, it's so easy to have a short memory of what the city did during 2020 to now. So, reminding people that we have been thinking about them even through that session and how much it totaled, because many people forgot that. But that's important. And right now, with the challenges that we still have, we still need to move forward. I was happy about education, how much that, you know, that percentage for the schools and for education, because we are one of the, as they say, top for education in these cities. And by putting what we're doing for that, we're making a point of keeping levels for education. I also was pleased to do with the Public Utilities, Public Works, that's our base, you know, infrastructure. If that is not funded, just like our safety is, there will be some cave-ins, as you had that word up there. But thank you for what you're doing. We'll all sit together and, you know, look at what you've put out for us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I echo what everyone, all of my colleagues are saying here at the table. And also, I want to thank Mr. Cheney, Mr. Chadelier, for your hard work. I know this starts probably back in October or last fall to present this. Incredible. But, and I think we are a well-run city, and I think the focus, it seems like, on this budget is both education and also public safety, and I applaud that. But also, when government is run, we can also, we all look at revenues, but also look at cost of services. And like Councilman Holcomb said, can we sharpen our pencil on the cost of services versus, you know, increasing revenues? So, just throw that out there. And I don't have any answers today, but we can think about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Sabrina?
I like, many of you have received emails from residents who want to lower the assessment. And so, as we take into account everything that's before us, I do want to make sure that residents know that we have received their request and we are considering that. And we find it very important to address that matter.
Anybody else? Let me just conclude by, you know, thanking... Yes, Patrick.
Before you conclude, I just want to make sure I got direction clear in terms of next steps. So, what I heard from council is, you want us to produce a sliding scale of reductions per penny and try to get that ahead of your first public hearing.
That is correct.
Okay. And the mindset of that, council, just to be clear, you would like for the various options of one cent down to four cents...
That is correct.
...to be made publicly available in some forum, right, after we present it to you all? Okay? And then, the one last thing, too, Mayor, before, also, I heard a request from Mr. Schulman, and I just want to make sure there's concurrence with the rest of the body on this one, tax relief options to impact the people that most likely need it or on the margins, for example, renters. Would you like for us to include a write-up on that and some of the nuances and challenges with using some, getting relief on the other taxing...
I think, given the current state of the economy and everything, I think that would be of paramount importance. Anybody disagree?
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You know, I think it was Shakespeare that said, "We live in interesting times, and certainly, we are in the midst of challenging times." And, you know, once again, our public has come to expect and deserve the quality of services that they have been getting historically. But once again, we have some challenges in front of us. And I hearken back to the days, if I can remind some of our council members, when we first were committed with the hurricane. And it changed our priorities. It changed the way we thought about things. And it redirected us in many ways. And we responded, okay? Hurricane Matthew was a game-changer to this, you know, to our budget, to our process, our way of life. And I think in a lot of ways, we're confronted now, you know, what we have gone through with the COVID, followed by inflation, where everybody, everybody has been affected directly. You know, we're a large city, 466,000 people now, with a lot of mileage, a lot of responsibilities. But once again, I think what we're hearing from the council, that we have the obligation to, as, you know, my fellow Marines said, sharpen the pencil and find out. But I think what we're, what this council is really, what I think a strong point, is that we're willing to engage with the public and find out what their priorities are, what they may be willing to do without, or what they really feel is essential. So, once again, it's wants versus needs, but once again, I am confident that this council is going to come together with a tremendous management team, and we're going to come up with the right answer. But let's just play chess, not checkers. Let's look ahead. These are extraordinary times, but I think what we've been doing with economic development, the future's going to be bright. And if we can bring in the businesses and the industries and, you know, and other revenue streams in the future, then we're going to be able to go back and look at these projects we may had to put on the back burner for now. But I'll say, let's get through the dark period now, but let's say our future is bright. Okay? Thank you. Okay? All right. Now, we're going to into council discussions and initiatives. Okay? We're going to go with Michael, and then Barbara, Sabrina, and then...
That's quite a docket. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep mine brief. I have two things. First one I want to say is that on Saturday morning, we held a community walk at Scarborough Square with their Civic League, sponsored by the Scarborough Square Civic League. And it was a really, really extraordinary experience. I learned a lot, and I want to thank the Scarborough Square Civic League for initiating the community walk and the conversation. And I want to thank all of the members of city staff, public safety professionals, Public Works, Public Utilities, Parks and Rec, I can go on and on, code enforcement, who gave up time with their families on a Saturday. Some were on the clock, some had to adjust their schedules to be there. And it was, it was a really fruitful and productive walk and learning experience and town hall on the move. And I just really think it was remarkable. So, I want to thank all of the city staff. I want to thank the community. And I want to thank particularly RJ Mattis, who was an organizer for that. He deserves a lot of credit for coordinating those efforts. And we have a lot of work to do that's coming out of that conversation. Scarborough Square is a really wonderful, vibrant, connected community that's deserving of all the attention and resources that they'll receive. And I just want to, just hats off to everyone involved.
Thank you.
The other thing I want to say is that on Sunday, I had a chance to attend a very special event, Fifty Shades of Purple, where our colleague, Dr. Amelia Ross-Hammon, was recognized for her leadership in the community, along with many other women leaders in the community. So, it was a privilege to attend and celebrate her achievements and...
Congratulations.
...the President, you're great. Congratulations. Put Virginia Beach in a very good light, and we're thankful for her leadership. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yep. Okay, Barbara?
Well, it was two weeks ago today at almost exactly this time that we got a fire call from West Neck Village, or a brush fire that, on a day like today with the March winds blowing, just went rampant through that community very, very quickly. And we really appreciate the work of our department in getting that under control in about two hours. But I can tell you, that was a very fearful time for the people in West Neck and Indian River Plantation, because in going down that fairway, or whatever you call it, so quickly, it went over about 20 acres in that length of time. And those houses out there are very close because they were allowed to be built the way they're built because there was a golf course there. But with the golf course not there now as an active golf course, we've been hearing from these people for a good while, but now they're very, very, very concerned because of the reality of what happened when this area that had been so meticulously maintained has been left to do its own thing to a lot of extent. We do have some requirements for mowing in some areas, but in other areas, it's just as natural, and the people out there are not even allowed to mow off their own property behind their houses. And I can tell you, I have heard an awful lot, I'm sure all of you have too. And I know that from that very first day, I've been in touch with the city manager and the city attorney, saying, "We've got to look at this. We've got to investigate this situation. We've got to investigate what has occurred. How do we keep this to make sure it doesn't happen again?" So, I've asked for some comments now about the investigations and what's going on.
Okay, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council...
Councilmember Henley, in particular. I think we all appreciate the seriousness of this matter, and we assure you that we're staying on top of it, and we're working with all the respective important personnel to make sure that this is a high priority for us. And the fire, the fire is under investigation, and as Ms. Henley mentioned, it happened on March 7. And that morning was a pretty interesting morning for Virginia Beach. We had a notice from the National Weather Service that had an increased fire danger alert midway through the day and also through the evening. And the conditions were dry and very windy. We had sustained winds of about 15 to 17 miles per hour and gusts up to 40 miles per hour. Ms. Henley mentioned that the fire department did an amazing job in preventing any property damage to people's homes, and we're commending them for that. After the fire, our investigators sent up the police drone and also the fire drone and worked with the police helicopter to get a better sense of what was going on as well. And right now, we're still investigating it, and we haven't determined the cause of the fire at this time, but we, like I said before, we're still investigating it. Anybody that has any information, please feel free to contact the Fire Marshal's office. The Fire Marshal can be contacted at 757-385-4228. From a code enforcement perspective, staff has been monitoring the site, including responding to and investigating complaints from the residents. To date, staff has not identified any verifiable evidence of noncompliance to the settlement agreement that council signed, that we, that council authorized last year. However, with the revelation of this public safety incident, my office and Mark's office, the city attorney, were evaluating every possible course of action in conjunction with the fire department. We understand it's incredibly frustrating, and we feel the concerns of the residents, but we will continue to investigate this and share this information as much as possible when we can.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate all of that. And I know it takes time to do the investigation. I know that we made a settlement that we were not real happy with, but it seemed to be our only recourse at that time. But I think this event has really made the reality of just what is possible out there again. This is another windy day, and it's another dry day, and I can tell you, those people are fearful, and I don't blame them. But I think we're going to have to look at this whole situation from the standpoint of any, anything that the city can do and that we need to work with this community in any way we can, and that we're certainly open to going forward, hearing if there are possible things to resolve it. I know that there are things that are floating out there as far as resale of this property and so forth. And of course, it's a private ownership, and it's not a public property. But we do have responsibilities as far as nuisance, things that maybe are not allowed and shouldn't be allowed. And I think this event shows just how they can be a great problem for the adjoining property owners. And I don't know, I've been, tried to be careful over what I say about all of this because I know that things tend to wind up in court sometime, and we all know that what we say might put us on the witness stand, and I'm very much aware of that. But I just remember when that development was approved. And I voted against it because it was way above what the density was allowing in this area, but of course, it was approved, because of the Arnold Palmer Golf Course. And I think it's very clear that had that not been the fact, that this was an Arnold Palmer Golf Course or a very high-level golf course, we would never have allowed the building as it's done out there. And now, with the golf course not there, and so much of this area not maintained, other than in a natural state, we've got a problem. And I don't know what the course of action is, but we really need to look at this. And I think it's time to assure the people out there that we are going to look at it very specifically to see if there's something we can do, because when you see the pictures of how close that fire was coming to those properties, there's a problem there that we've got to deal with.
Thank you. Sabrina, Rosemary, Rocky, and then Amelia. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that each member of the body had a copy of this study, the Centerville District, at the time, it was Centerville District, now District 7. The study for getting that district center approved, or study showing that it is a necessary need in District 7. So, I want to make sure everyone had a copy of that. Going to pass around a petition for the center that was done by one of our oldest residents in the district. Please take a look at that. Also, please indulge me for a moment. Want to bring out a couple of areas to note in the study as you review that information. Like many of you, how you certainly congenially advocate and represent your district, I am passionately... I am passionately continuing to advocate for District 7 for this much needed, uh, recreation center. And so the city manager has done his job and has provided guidance and advisement. One thing in particular that stood out to me is, uh, the delay that was mentioned for the district recreational center. And I have to say that, that's something that I certainly want to encourage council, um, to look at ways as we do our job to prioritize that need in District 7. So really quickly, um, the reason I'm pointing this information out, I want to make sure I'm clear in communicating to this body the importance and the need of the facility, especially to the new members that we have here. Also confirming that there was always a consensus to fund this project from the very onset when I came onto council back in 2018, which for me seemed so long ago, going into my fifth year. Thirdly, I want to clarify the need for this year's budget. That I'm not asking for the 37 to 70 million that is purported in the study to, uh, build the center, but at some point, we have to plan in the budget to have that done. Uh, and but the first step would be to approve the 5 million for design. Uh, and as you know, uh, unless we approve that first step, we cannot, uh, secure or confirm, uh, a site because we must first approve that 5 million. Finally, just want to confirm that there is, uh, that there are viable sites in the study. And, um, thank you to those that I contacted. I contacted, uh, several members of the body. Appreciate those who were able to discuss this matter with me. Those who were not, certainly open to discussion later and welcome your feedback here. Um, just going really quick to the mission of the city of Virginia Beach. We are here as a body to enhance the economic, the educational, the social, and the physical enhancement of this community. And we are also, as our mission states, is to make sure we provide those services that are needed and requested by citizens. This is important to note because in the study, it designates several times and key questions that the residents spoke several times stating that this was a requirement, that it was a need and it still remains true today. Briefly giving you the history of the, this particular ask. Again, when I came into office in 20, in 2018, first thing I did was sat down with our city manager. Some of you may remember during that time, that was Dave Hanson. And Dave knew that I was new. We sat down and we talked about the need. First thing that Mr. Hanson did was he's carved out, um, the money for the study. It was a hundred thousand. And then he put in the 5 million for design for the 23, 24 budget. And we talked about the plan of about four years, making sure this happened. So that was decided back when I came in. However, fast forwarding a bit to where we are, 2019, the mayor and I sat down, uh, with Dr. Robertson at Regent. And we talked about ways that we could come up with a partnership, um, to provide this facility for the residents in Centerville at the time. Further confirming, there was always a consensus to get this project done. Uh, and that's important to note because when, uh, myself and Mr. Duhany talked, there was some question, um, or if the body wants to commit to doing the project. But as I mentioned, there was always consensus to do the project. It was just how to get it done. So that was in 2019. Unfortunately, Regent University did not agree, uh, to partner on that effort. And so 2019, I requested the 5 million for design. And I was told that year, wait until the following year. When 2020 came, I requested the 5 million again, reiterating that I was told in 2020 it would get done. But again, it was not received, um, and didn't make it through the process. 2021, that year, that was a discussion amongst the body to move forward, uh, possibly with a recreation center in the district that would even help with a rehabilitation program for our public safety, uh, staff who retired. And so that gave me hope. And I certainly look forward to, uh, having that 5 million in design approved that year. But sadly, it wasn't. But again, um, with my tenacity, uh, asking, working with my colleagues to say, okay, well, you said last year I could have it done. And it didn't take place. And so 22 comes around, the 5 million still declined. So as we sit here in 2023, I'm going on my fifth year serving the great citizens in District 7. And I can tell you, the need for this center is still as great as it was when I came into office in 2018. I remember going to, uh, community meetings, being grabbed by the hand and saying, Ms. Wooten, if you become the district rep, we want our rec center. We feel as though we have been, um, placed at the side and our concerns not prioritized. That always stuck with me. And today, I continue to have that same interest for the citizens of District 7. So really quickly, I want to make sure as you peruse the study that you have, pay close attention to page 13. Page 13, there is a question there. Question 6 says, um, it talks about the level of importance in Virginia Beach parks and recreation to provide various benefits. There you see, the residents said, please provide access to parks, facilities, programs. That was at the top of their list. So they want access to programs like the rec center. Page 14, uh, calls into question, question 8, talks about parks and recreation facilities respondents households have a need for. And it was determined that community recreation centers was the number one need for the household. Again, going back to our mission, we are supposed to be providing services that are requested in, by our citizens. And this is a need, it's not a one. Never has been a one, but it's always been determined as a need. And the study showed 70% of the households agree with that. Page 16, question 9, facilities that are most important to households. The number one facility listed by residents was community recreation centers. Again, compounding the need for the residents in District 7. Question 41 is important when you look, or excuse me, page 41. When I talked to several of the members of this body, they mentioned, well, how do we move forward if there is no designated, designated site? Well, page 41 gives you several designated sites. There are at least five, what other potential sites? Uh, there's one at the Charlestown Athletic Park, one at Lynn Haven Parkway. There's another possibility at Lynn Haven Parkway and then two possible sites, um, to include Centerville Turnpike and Chesapeake Elbow Road. So that's the gist of, uh, my comments. But I would like to say, in terms of possible sites, designated sites, we have them. They're in the study. I'm confirming them for you. So if that is your question or holdback, please make sure you review that information. But I do want to clarify very quickly with the city manager, in order to move forward with a designated site, we have to have approval from the body, um, to actually take that first step. Is that correct?
Council member, to, to get an approved site, yes, we need approval from the body in order to move forward with that.
So in some of my conversations with some individuals, they, you know, ask for that designated site. So with clarity, you can see and have heard from the city manager, we first must move forward with the approval process to get a designated site. Lastly, I pass this information out to you really quickly. This is a petition from, I, I mentioned, one of the oldest, um, residents in, in the district. She took the initiative to get a petition signed. She's all about 81 years old. And she said to me, Ms. Wooten, we would like, I would like to have this facility built while I am still alive. That resonates with me. Here's what her petition says. To City Council of Virginia Beach, we, the Level Green Civic League and other residents of the Centerville District in the city of Virginia Beach petition this city council to approve the funding necessary to construct a recreation center in the Centerville District. Centerville is the only district in the city without a recreation facility. One district, Bayside, has two. Surely this omission of a recreation facility in our district does not reflect the council's view of the worthiness of Centerville and its residents for such a facility. The value of a recreation facility for physical, social, mental, and emotional well-being and development is undeniable. Residents of our district are equally deserving of a facility that meets their recreational needs as are the residents of other districts in the city. Neglect of the Centerville District has historically been far too obvious and far too long. The youth, seniors, and all Centerville residents need and deserve a recreational center and we need a city council that recognizes and supports that need. The Level Green Civic League and other residents of the Centerville District, therefore urgently petition our city council to make funding for the construction of a recreation center a priority. At that time, it was 2021, 2022. We are now in 2022, 2023 budget. And my hope is this body, this new body will help prioritizing the need of the district members for District 7. They would certainly appreciate it. So would I. Again, this petition was, uh, done by an 81-year-old member. Her name is, uh, Dr. Patricia Revanel. And I thank her for her efforts, but this is only one of many petitions, emails, letters that you will receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rosemary, and then, uh, Rocky, and then Amelia.
I just want to let everybody know that yesterday, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, Tay- Taylor Adams, Sarah Lockett from the Schools of Vocational Education and the Chair and the Vice Chair of the School Board to talk about vocational education and doing that, uh, joint task force between the city council and the, and the school board. It was a very productive meeting. Everybody left pretty happy. And we're going to be working on a, a resolution. It's going to go to both bodies concerning, um, putting a task force together. Uh, and, and it came really apparent to school board members that there's a lot of, uh, needs of employment coming from the business community that they need trained people for and how the schools could be working with that to supply trained workforce for our business communities. So, uh, we'll be hearing more about it, but I, I, I just want to let y'all know that we had this meeting and it went really, really well.
Okay, good. You know, if we could try to be a little succinct, we got to get into close, but we certainly want to hear from everybody. Rocky and then Josh. Okay.
I think Dr. Ross Hammond, you before me? Did you have?
No, no, you were first and then, then.
Oh, he's keeping count.
He's such a gentleman, though.
Real quick, this is, this is just, uh, a, a quick comment. I, I was hoping I'd see something on the, uh, Urban Agriculture Committee on, on the agenda today. I, I thought we were going to speak to it. But I do know we have some important issues coming up with the, uh, with the budget and we're quite capable of juggling two balls at one time. So I, I do want to make sure that this doesn't get removed from the docket and that we do hear about the urban agriculture because the folks are definitely interested. And, uh, like Ms. Wooten said, the, the lady said she wants to see the rec center before she passes. I had a resident that told me they want chickens before they pass. So it's the same thing. So Karen, we hear you out there and, uh, we'll make sure we keep this ball moving and, uh, and have some discussion on this.
Okay, we will, but you know, I think right now we're, you're going to, a little focus on the budget, but be assured this will be addressed. And Rocky, a quick thing on Kepsall Pony last Saturday.
Oh, that, that was, uh, Mr. Mayor, that was an awesome turnout. We had council member Ralph and, and yourself and, and myself and
Auburn Ralph.
Yeah, well, we had council member Ralph here, Jennifer Ralph. And then we had Senator Ralph there. And it was, it was a good turnout. It was a little bit cold and a little bit wet, but, uh, we let folks know that, uh, spring baseball is right around the corner. Good turnout.
Okay, Amelia?
You and I'll go as quickly as possible. First, I'll start with the sad and then we'll move forward. I'm sure a lot of you heard about the injury of the dog and the, uh, two youth victims. So one thing we do work together, Josh and myself, and we call, um, our city manager, Mr. Duhany, to advise how to approach that because that crossed both of our, um, districts, the elementary schools and the Bayside High School. So he gave us an advice and we contacted the Bayside School for their principal to let him know our concern, how we could address bringing, you know, fruit basket or something to their family. So, yeah, so that's what we did together. Josh pulled it, wrote it up for us. Second thing, um, just to say how this mayor moves from place to place. Right after State of the City, the two of us was over at the Triumph Commercial, uh, real estate ribbon cutting. And that was a nice turnout, uh, including people from other cities, from Fort Smith and so forth. Other thing, uh, to remember, the World Cultural Festival is this weekend. They hope that some of you will come out between at least 11 and 1 will be when the mayor will say a few words and some of us, then they're going to have some delicious food afterwards for that. And the last thing I'm really excited about is what happened yesterday at 8 o'clock. Burn Station Fire Station opening. Pleased to announce we have that district full, Burn Station Fire and EMS Station 22 officially opened Monday and received their first 911 call at 9 o'clock. So that's like hitting the ground running. Our new station houses an engine, ladder, and an ambulance to serve the community and businesses in the vicinity. It's a two-story building, capacity to house 30 firefighters and four EMS personnel. Runs about 14,000 square foot. And so far in District 2, we do have two fire stations, the Town Center one and now this one. We're really proud to announce, take time, stop by, greet them, and congratulations to our city.
Great.
That's it.
Okay, and Josh, uh, can you bring up, uh, you know, uh, discuss the issue about the Cape Story by the sea that you and I, you know, consulted, Chris, where if we can discuss, uh, you know, a direction. Basically, there were some environmental groups that were, uh, concerned that the city treasurer is putting up for auction, auction some wetlands, uh, consideration in fear of, uh, you know, the pot, the potential of growth. Could you, uh, both encapsulate? Okay, Chris, uh, Josh, go ahead and start because you had a record, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, uh, briefly, uh, Councilmember Taylor and I were contacted by, um, some concerned citizens, uh, who noticed that there were nine lots, uh, that were, um, substandard, non-buildable lots that, that are in Cape Story along, uh, along, pretty close along the water, that, uh, that were going up for auction in a, in a tax sale. The tax sale, uh, the bidding period starts tomorrow and runs through March 30th. So, um, there, there was, um, yeah, I, I, I want to say that lots are assessed at $100 each and the, uh, the bidding price was a thousand bucks per lot. Again, non-buildable. There was some question whether or not, uh, the properties might qualify for, um, acquisition under the open space program. Um, I'm, uh, recognizing Councilwoman Henley as co-leasance under the base committee, uh, Advisory Committee. Um, and I've reached out to, uh, the Vice Mayor about it as well. I I wasn't sure what the process was for evaluating whether or not these properties did do in fact qualify for open space. Um, and, uh, and and considering the timing, uh, and the timeline right now with the auction, you know, bidding process opening tomorrow and closing at the end of the month, um, whether it might be appropriate to request, um, recognizing that City Treasurer is not, uh, a, you know, part of, uh, she's a constitutional officer, so we could really request whether or not she could delay, um, the the auction so that that we could evaluate whether these properties could be purchased. Um, I know that there has been some expense, uh, put into noticing and advertising the sale, so I I do want to be sensitive to that. Um, but I anyway, I I was, I was really just trying to involve a couple of different people on it, and, uh, and hopefully it'll get its way through the Open Space Advisory Committee meeting, which I believe is supposed to be on, what, the twenty-seventh?
Next Monday.
Okay, so, um, I I didn't know if there was any interest in in, uh, pursuing this. Um, I know the ma- the mayor went out there, uh, a couple of days ago as well, too, so.
Yeah, yeah, Chris, any, uh, okay. You know, Pat- Patrick, did you have a chance to talk to the City Treasurer?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't able to get in in touch with her after our conversation this afternoon.
Uh, but, you know, in my discussions with her, one of the problems they have, you know, in delaying this, that that these properties can be, you know, taken by eminent domain or there was some other considerations out there. Um, I think the recommendation, uh, you know, that we would make, first of all, that these properties are just totally unbuildable. Okay, but once again, we have a concern, uh, about what we can do. Uh, so, you know, perhaps at this point recommend that you do meet with the wetlands folks, and then we would have, uh, you know, the council, uh, you know, discussion on it. But once again, I think we have to value public input, uh, you know, that there are concerns about that and, you know, put in the proper safeguards that, you know, these properties, you know, were, uh, thing. But once again, we have a constitutional officer that has jurisdiction over this.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, you know, one good thing that did result from this was apparently the the process that that had been used by the treasurer to 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 try and solicit whether or not there was any interest from the city in in purchasing, um, properties that went up to auction, uh, would typically go through Public Works and Legal. Um, but but I did have a a chance to have a conversation with her that maybe, um, maybe, maybe Parks and Rec needs to be involved in this, too, considering open spaces underneath Parks and Rec, and whether or not, I mean, uh, this this to me, in my mind, is a a great potential use for open space, uh, money to to help us, um, you know, address sea level rise and and, um, flooding concerns, especially where properties are not buildable. So so even if 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 we if we miss an opportunity here, um, hopefully the process will be there in the future for us to take advantage of.
Well, you know, but, you know, Rosemary, and then Chris.
Oh, and and I think this sort of opens our eyes to when there's things like that come up, that maybe we could get some advanced notice from the treasurer to let us know these things are coming, and then we can say yea or nay, but but having such a last minute with the auction, this is going to be a really tough one, but I I think it's very worthy and it's looked at. But if it doesn't work out, if we can be, if we can work with the treasurer to to get more advanced notice, because she's known for some time that these were going to have to be sold. This didn't happen yesterday.
Okay, Chris. I just had to open comments. It was separate from.
Okay, uh, you know, but i- in conclusion, if if I may make a recommendation, okay? Because once again, we want to listen to, you know, the folks that have the concern. You know, the land is unbuildable, but besides, you know, we've just got to give assurances. So Josh, if you're going to have the meeting with the open space on, uh, you know, Monday?
Uh, the twenty-seventh, I'm not a co-leasance.
Oh, okay, who's Barbara?
Well, Chris and I are.
Oh, Chris and you are. If we can get a recommendation on Monday, if necessary, perhaps we can call, you know, uh, you know, add on, you know, is, can we do a special meeting that could, you know, that we can discuss this and take a direction? Or what what's your thoughts about that?
Mr. Mayor, let me, um, let me check with the, um, the City Treasurer, and I'll follow back up with the council. So just to clarify, is the council saying they want to purchase the properties?
No, no, we we look at the possibilities of it and, you know, but obviously the cost. But from what I understand, this has been, you know, abandoned property for a while, and it is totally unbuildable. Uh, but, you know, once again, I don't think if there is a a incurred cost, it would be, you know, not, you know, not up there, but, you know, I think if we do speak.
Buy the land, we'll be responsible for the maintenance and the any liability associated with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But once again, I think if we get all this on the table, but, you know, but once again, uh, you know, we have, I I would like to at least be responsive to the thing, get all the information on the table. And I think Rosemary was right, you know, a lot of this came up quickly and that that the wheels were in motion. But I think we have to be responsive.
The treasurer to see if she can delay that process and then get more information about the.
Okay, that would be great. And tell her I would support that, and I would appreciate that, okay? All right, thank you. Okay, Chris.
I'll be brief, um, but before I start, I did want to thank, um, my Vice Mayor, the Mayor, my colleagues. I know with the new district system, there was a lot of talk that we'd be siloed and wouldn't work together, but, um, I just want to thank everyone for being available, returning calls. There's been a lot of open, uh, dialogue, even with Josh jumping in on this, uh, District Eight issue, but he's a specialist in the environmental space, so, um, I recognize that, you know, I take it a little bit further. Um, but moving on, I want to thank Captain O'Brien, Second Precinct City Manager, being very responsive to the citizens over in Great Neck. Uh, in less than a month, we had some speeding issues, and Captain O'Brien reached out, clearly communicated the expectations, we got the speed signs up, and just received the report, uh, today. And, uh, children should be safe. There's not as much speeding as residents expected, um, but nonetheless, we were able to provide them what they asked for, and then wanted to thank, uh, huge congratulations, and thank you to District Eight residents and business owners Jerry and Amy Frostick from J and A Racing this weekend. I just got an email from Jerry. Um, he just wanted to thank us for taking time to continue to support the Shamrock Week Weekend. He said it was an amazing weekend. They sold out all the races, twenty-two thousand participants from all fifty states and eleven countries. Uh, the oceanfront was packed with excitement, positivity, and fun, and and fun all for all weekend. We have received more positive comments about the weekend than ever before. Uh, the common theme is that Virginia Beach is a beautiful, beautiful and whole community, which is very friendly and welcoming. So he said that, thank you. Um, and then upcoming May tenth, at the Kempfville High School Entrepreneurial and Business Academy, they're going to have the Pitch Night. I'm one of the mentors to one of the teams, being, you know, Hat Company. Um, and last year, we had a guest judge, Governor Youngkin, along with Mr. Bruce Thompson. So I just wanted the community to know to come out, support these young entrepreneurs, uh, that are really working their tails off to, uh, pitch and hopefully win twenty-five thousand dollars. And then lastly, a huge thanks again to Taren Denham in the City Manager's Office and Lauren Hopkins with the City Clerk's Office. Uh, we have our District Eight, uh, Q Two Town Hall coming up on May eighteenth from six to eight at Great Neck Recreation Center, so just want to thank them for getting that together.
Thank you. Great conversations. Two quick points. Virginia Beach has forever said that we've lost an icon and a true hero, Pastor Cox. Uh, you know, to inform council members that the services will be conducted for him this Saturday at eleven o'clock. Um, I've been asked to give remarks, and I would certainly welcome members of the city council, you know, to come. I think it's only fitting that we were able to honor him recently. And, uh, I'll tell you what, what a remarkable person. And, uh, you know, if you can make it, I would personally appreciate it. This is great. Uh, the other thing is, uh, once again, in this sense of community, I want to thank the Norfolk Admirals for having Virginia Beach Night the other night. There were about six thousand people showed up, one of their highest crowds. And, uh, it just showed this sense of community that was there. Special thanks to our Sheriff's Honor Guard that was there and the kids from Woodstock Elementary that sang the National Anthem. I tell you what, it was a great thing, and, uh, you know, it just defines us as a community. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, uh, we can go into the agenda review?
Yes. So, item number six. Speaker's statement. Item number six. And, um, item seventeen is going to be deferred. The staff has asked for seventeen to be deferred. They've got some county issues that they want us to straighten up, and they'll bring it back. Wonder, yeah, indefinitely, is that okay?
Yeah, indefinitely, it's purpose, perfect, Vice Mayor.
And then item fifteen, there was.
I I'm passing those around for you right now. I'm sorry, I was not able to get them to you before you started. What you have coming around is a revised exhibit, which shows a slightly smaller, uh, area. And you also have a revised agreement. There are two primary changes on pages four and five. At the top of page four, I've given you a a black line so you can see the changes easily. The top of page four makes clear that this area will be open to the public and not just patrons at the, uh, at the restaurant. Uh, that's additional text there, and the other significant text change is on page five, where the general liability insurance requirement was changed from five hundred thousand to one million dollars.
And I went down there last Thursday, and I enjoyed and sat in the space and and experienced it. Uh, it's very, very nice. Uh, it's going to be shrunk from what it is almost by a third, so it's going to be brought way back. There's some large planters around the perimeter that are going to be removed so that that will be welcoming to the public. This, and I asked the question, is this a waiting area for your, uh, patrons? And no, because they're, and a lot of you have been in more minutes before, their hostess to get, uh, stand is near the front, and people will come in through the front. They're not going to be allowed, especially this summer, that door is going to be blocked off to be going in through the back. Um, I know there's been some question as to whether this is, um, going to start a precedence. The truth of the matter is encroachments, we, uh, we look at them on a case-by-case basis. And I know we had a lot of things come up because of the North End. And the North End is totally different, because those encroachments are going to benefit just the people who live in those, in that house. This is going to be a very nice benefit for the public to go and sit on a nice bench. And, uh, this is a a gentleman that does a wonderful job with his landscaping and flowers. Uh, it it's a, it's a very nice space. Um, I I recommend that we approve it. It is in my district. Josh?
Just a a quick question. Um, the plan shows a a footprint reduction to nine hundred and thirty-four square feet. Is that, um, change going to be, um, made in here, too? Because it's still less than eleven twenty-five.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll conform that.
So we're going to have something else handed out?
No, we'll just conform that. The the agreement is not part of the ordinance, it was just an attachment. We will conform the agreement, though, when we provide it for signature.
Okay.
Okay. Barbara?
We just, we just, we just attach it as part of it. We could just vote on it out there.
You want it pulled?
I'd just like to read it somehow, because we did get something from that.
Right, we did.
That left, so it's fifteen.
And and the staff did recommend approval. Um, if you've had a chance to read it by the time we sit down, and it's okay for consent, would you let me know?
I approve what he's doing. But we're pulling six.
Yeah, pulling six.
Pulling six.
Seventeen.
And seventeen is going to be deferred indefinitely. And then if you have a chance to read this before six o'clock, let me know. Does anybody else have a problem with with it, Chris?
Yeah, uh, I wanted to kind of have a discussion. I was able to get down there yesterday and took this picture, just so, this is a good visual so that we can see, um, where it's at. And I was at the ad hoc meeting as liaison to the rec. And so, um, I just, I do think, um, each encroachment is different and situational, but there were ten other Boardwalk cafes that, um, were able to abide by that eight hundred square foot, um, rule or understanding. And so there was a young lady, you can actually see if you zoomed in, sitting in the, uh, space. And I asked if you were able to dine, and, uh, the staff did mention that that was not an option, because they don't have any tables, um, but that you could have a beverage. So I do want to make sure that we're cognizant, um, that, um, you know, there are ten other cafes that, uh, may see this as an opportunity to encroach. Hope that's not the case, um, but I'll take you as your district representative. I know you are supporting this, but I did want to go down and see for myself.
Thank you for wanting to look at it, I really appreciate it. This is a lovely space. He assured me this was not going to be for eating and drinking. It's only be, and actually, so if he pulls it up, it's just going to be a grassy area, but it's at a place that the public really wouldn't use, it's up close to the building. I don't see anybody taking their lawn chairs and sitting up there. So this gives them at least a place to sit down and relax, so.
Can I ask what his purpose is? What is the purpose of it?
He built it, um, he had permission during COVID to build it, and he had it built, so it's already there. Otherwise, he's going to tear it out.
So didn't others do it, too, during COVID?
They just didn't encroach the city property. All right.
But he he tells me he had permission.
Okay, at this point, thank you, Rosemary.
Well, anyway, besides Barbara wanting to read it, um, does anybody else have a problem with this?
Okay. All right. Uh, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Public contract, discussion or reward of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds and discussion of the terms or the scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A twenty-nine. Princess Anne Village and the Sports Blacks. Publicly held property, discussion or considerations for the acquisition of real property for the public purpose of the disposition of publicly held property, where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A three. District Six, District Six, District Ten. And then finally, personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one, and that would be council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Okay. We'll all move.
Alver Belichi.
Aye.
Alver Henley. Aye. Alver Holt.
Aye.
Alver Revenant.
Aye.
Alver Roban.
Aye.
Alver Rouse.
Aye.
Alver Gillen.
Aye.
Alver Dylott.
Aye.
Alver Wood.
Aye.
Alver Wilson.
Aye.
Alver Dyer.
Aye. Okay, we are recessed.